All right, we're gonna get started now, everyone. We're gonna call the meeting to order and I would like you to reflect, Mrs. Luden, that every one of the board members is present and I'm gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we need a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the Tuesday, October 2nd, 2018 Board of Education Study Session Agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Alina. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Charles, and we will have this highly contentious vote. That came fast. We're on good pace.
Good Wi-Fi.
And it passes. Do we have any public comments this evening? No public comments. We'll move past that to 3.01 and there are no information items or reports this night. So we'll move to Section 4, Preliminary Contracts, Agreements, and Change Orders. And we have Carol Embry.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hi.
Our standard reports are posted for you that list all four types, whether they be purchase orders or contracts and agreements. We have 12 items under contracts and agreements that are within the threshold of 15,000 to So just under the 500,000 threshold. Those are representative of a variety of software items as well as travel approval for a variety of secondary level trips. Then, under the purchase order section, again, under the 500,000 but over 15,000, we have 24 separate items posted for you. Those have all been processed through the routine bid procedures or request for proposal procedures. And, as is our usual pattern, you have two weeks before we will ask you to vote on these. If you have any questions this evening, I'd be happy to answer those or phone a friend.
Any questions this evening? Very good. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to Board Policy Adoptions and Revisions. Dr. Jungman?
So we have three additional MSBA recommendations came out of 2018B. Deal with instructional intervention programs for homeless students and programs for English learners. Feel free to review. Let us know if you have any questions. These are just for first read tonight, but these are all in, I think, direct verbiage from the MSBA recommendation. We have, I think, two policies remaining out of 2018B that were still under administrative review and will come to you in the next month or so. So we're getting close to getting through that update. These are the three for this month. Follow me if you need it.
Very well. We can study that on our own. We'll move to new business. Approval of the transportation routes. Good evening.
So as is your common practice and throughout the state, because of Missouri law, in October, by the end of October, all of our transportation routes will need to be approved by the Board. So you have attached in front of you, there are 132 different buses that we use to transport approximately 7,900 students and around 10,000 miles a day on these routes. We actually have 731 different bus runs, which is actually compared to 703 last year. So we're up a little bit on the bus run. Some of that is due to, we had a barrier street change that added some of those. We have the Campbell early childhood routes, also some sped changes, potentially some additional go-caps changes, as well as the homeless population that we would transport. So this is for first read for you. It will, like I said, need approval by the end of October to comply with Missouri law. Any questions that I can answer for you?
Questions, anyone? So we'll take that up for vote at the next meeting?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Are you moving on to the next thing?
Yep. You ready for me to do the next one?
Well, I got confused. Give me a second. Yes. Intercom replacement projects at several different locations. I am ready.
Okay. So we, I've communicated some of those to you already, but we have, and in the district, we've got 23 sites that we have intercoms that range from as old as 38 years old down to 17. Our replacement cycle is to do these after 15 years. And so through our capital forecast process, we are getting a much better handle on this. But this is one of the priorities that has risen to the top with all the feedback that we received on safety and security. And so this will be the, one of the big purchases that we will make initially out of the enhancement, safety enhancement funds that's funded through capital purchases. The total of this reason this is a separate agenda item is because the total exceeds a $500,000 amount. So you'll see that Mann, Disney, Phelps, Pittman, Stude, Westport, Wilder, Carver, and Central are the nine schools that are listed for you for your consideration. Again, this is a first read. The reason we've got three of those 23 that we're currently dealing with right now because they have failed. And then the other 11 are on the, as a reminder, they are actually on the project study list for the renovation versus new construction. So once that list is completed, then more than likely we will revisit some of those as well. So the goal is to get these taken care of so that we have great communication within the building as well as we don't want them to fail before we get them taken care of. Because some of them have needed done a long time, so.
I'm picturing like a cup being held on one end and a string and a cup on the other. Yeah, we should move on from that.
What is R-A-U-L-A-N-D? What's that mean?
So that's a point I haven't brought up yet, but that is, Rolland is the brand of the system. And that's the spec that we have for all of our intercom systems. It's compatible. It does all of the things that we need. And so that has been what we have expected for years. And with Audio Acoustics is the only dealer in the region for Rolland. This is considered a sole source item, which means it traditionally doesn't then go out to the normal bid process because there's only one vendor in the region that can accommodate the spec that we have.
None of these are currently non-functioning?
No, they're all currently functioning. They're just at least 17 up to 38 years old. So we were identifying those that needed done. And like I said, this was one of the things that bubbled to the top with all the feedback that we received from staff and parents and students and administration, that intercoms needed to be fully functioning. And so we're trying to be proactive with this purchase rather than reactive. And like I said, this will be the first big purchase that comes out of the safety enhancement dollars that has been designated by the Board this year.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we'll move on to 6.03, the 2019 Legislative Platform.
So Posted For You is a copy of the 18 platform that we adopted. So I haven't begun any modification at this point, but wanted to get it out in your hands for you to begin to review what things are still relevant, what things aren't relevant anymore, and if there are things that we want to add that are, that have come to the, kind of the radar, on our radar since we would have adopted this, adopted this, I think, November of last year would have been the adoption date. So I want you to start reviewing. We don't necessarily need the conversation here, but want to get in your hands, some things to think about that are, I think, worthy of consideration, safety, right? Obviously, that's a game changer. That, some things that happened in the spring last year that reinvigorated those conversations. So I would expect it to be a legislative dialogue. I would also expect significant dialogue around the areas of workforce, right? Preparation and planning. So think about, do we need to address that in our platform where we haven't potentially before because we know that is governor's priority and that is going to be talked about a lot in the Bay's Com. Infrastructure is his other priority that he's been hitting hard on and a lot of that's dealing with highways and funding for those kind of infrastructure needs. So whether or not that ties to us, I would say it does a little bit, potentially with transportation funds, as you think about new funds that may be becoming available. But I think we hit a little bit on the transportation funds already, but we may want to double down on that with Formula already finding success and being fully funded at this point. Those are just a few of the ideas that have come across my mind, of things that may need to be added, but that's certainly not an exhaustive list. So if you have things that's come up through MSBA, other associations, start tossing them my way and I'll kind of assemble a list of thoughts that came their way. And also, if you have things that you think we need to revisit, that verbiage or that statement, whether it's a platform priority or state or the federal level, let me know. We'll start to assemble that and we'll bring it back for a deeper dialogue either later this month or at the November study sessions, if we can hammer it out.
John, one thing that just occurs to me, and this is really sort of ticky tack, but into the school reform heading, I don't like the language only because it kind of concedes that there's something that needs reforming.
Right.
And in some ways, if we oppose certain things, we are opposed to school reform, which is not in fact true. But it's, in debate terms, I don't want to debate on that side of the flow.
Right.
And I think maybe a different heading would be positioned a little bit differently.
Right. Good. Good feedback early. So you've got two pages. You've got all kinds of fun time stuff revisited. So let me know what you think and we can go from there.
Any other questions? Okay. Very good. And now we will move to Carol Embry and Architectural Project Studies. We have some friends in the room. I mean, we have lots of friends. Don't get me wrong. We have some friends in the room.
Okay. So dates way back to 2016 with the facility matched the plan, but more recently, in February 2018, the project study list was approved. And since then, we've had in August, a full presentation of the projects that have been studied by architects to determine what's the best solution, new or renovation. And then we provided you with another update, I believe it was in early September, with regard to some additional information. And tonight, we have yet a few more items, but they are very brief. They should not take long at all. So this evening, two pieces, the elementary gym addition, the cost study that you had approved for architects to do previously, and then Persian K-8. And all of this information is being provided to our community task force members and that meeting will occur Thursday evening. So we were able to provide you this just-in-time information prior to that. So for your information, the gym addition for elementary sites was a topic of conversation at one of the meetings. And we had identified that there are 19 elementary sites that do not have a designated gym. So they have a shared space. It may be a gym cafeteria situation. It may be simply a gym with the auditorium connected. And of the 19 sites, just as Travis just referenced, that it was on the project study list, we're not doing anything with it at this time. We've also narrowed down for you the eight sites that aren't currently on the project study list. So of the 19, 11 are on and these eight are not. Cowden, Field, Holland, Mann, Pittman, Twain, Watkins, and Wilder. So we asked them to give us a cost estimate and this work was done by H Design with Hollis and Miller. And the cost estimate for the gym addition is estimated at $2.7 million per gym. So if that were addressed at all eight sites, that would be $21.6 million to be added to the comprehensive work.
Say that number again, please.
21.6 million if all eight gyms were added at one time. So 2.7 million per gym.
I do believe the design, Embry, is that that would be a qualified wind shelter also.
Yes.
So would be FEMA, because there's no FEMA funds, right? So it's not, unless FEMA funds come in, it's not fully FEMA, but it is a wind shelter rated.
Wind shelter. That's correct.
Expect to that.
You got it. That's another FEMA qualification.
Okay. So at this point, I'm going to invite Mr. Brandon Day to the podium or wherever you might want to go, but I need to pull up your version. I've included each of their slides within this presentation so that it can be uploaded as a PDF, but they have it in a more legible format. So, yeah. Do you know? Start one. Very good. And I'll pass out your documents.
Shall I wait until we pass out?
No, you may go right ahead.
All right. So we looked at Pershing, K-8, and I'll walk you through, similar to the way we did of the previous projects, where this one had a condition score of 73. And I added, this also had a suitability of 57. So although the 73 condition score was relatively high for the other schools, we looked at the suitability score was quite a bit lower. The site area is 12.9 acres. Grade served at Pershing is K through 8. The building capacity for the MGT study was 1,015 currently, and the target would be 1,100. The project options that I'm about to present include one renovation option and one new. They're going to be very similar. Now, as we're looking at this site plan, just to orient you all, along the south here is Seminole and along the east, no, this is the west, is Ventura. And the small gym is down there on the south, the two-story building. And then if you're familiar with the site, it slopes considerably as you move from the school proper down towards Seminole, or that parking lot slopes quite a bit. So as we analyze what portions of the building could be, should be renovated, this two-story building is actually in really good condition, can be updated quite well. And we thought if we could use that as a starting block, the portion where the locker rooms and the old gym are could be removed and we could do an addition to the east of the existing building and then down south from the existing building. So the way this sets up, I'll start with the offices here on the southwest corner. The offices kind of project out so they get great visibility of the site in 270-degree views. It creates an overhead area where students can be dropped off and then enter a main entrance that goes into this commons area that would also function for cafeteria and performances. We have a multipurpose space with a new kitchen. And similar to the other middle schools that we showed you, we have the competition gym and the multipurpose and locker rooms here in the middle because those larger two-story spaces generally don't require as much daylight. And so we were able to push the other classrooms on either side of those main spaces, right? So in this back, top north corner, we have some of the more noisy spaces like the music and performing arts spaces over here, so they're more excluded from the rest of the school. This would be converted to elementary, both floors elementary, because it would be close to this new parking lot and drop-off. And then, of course, I mentioned the offices down here on the south, and then we'd also have specials here on the south that would orient around this new commons area. Upstairs, the renovated space would be a proportion of the elementary. And then we divided the upstairs, again, around these large two-story spaces. We have sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, all in their own individual wings, right, on the upper floor. So that keeps the sixth grade a little closer to the elementary, a little more divided from the seventh and eighth. Now, as we were looking at ways to do a whole new building, interestingly enough, this is gonna look very similar. The advantage of the site plan.
Can I have you pause for just a second? Can you go back to the renovation level one? And can you, with your wand, draw what would be the same? What would still exist and what would be?
So the blue portion of this building is the existing two-story building. This is where the offices are located now.
Right.
So the main door is right there. So this portion of the building would remain.
Is the only thing that would stay the same.
Yes. Everything to the north of that gets pretty spotty and deteriorated.
Yeah, go back to the.
To the site plan?
Yeah.
So this portion right here is the two-story space that would remain.
And everything up there would be gone.
And everything, all of the one-story up here would be removed.
Okay.
Including the library here. And then this gym and locker rooms and band room here would also be removed.
Okay. Good.
So this portion, it would be renovated completely and, yes, the building would remain.
I can't put some stuff. Basically, your space.
Right.
Yes. And addition goes.
Right. I mean, it's, you're calling in a renovation, but it's probably.
It's mostly addition.
It's, right, yeah, exactly. It's renovation plus-plus.
Mostly addition, yes. And that is just because as we were going through portions of the building that we felt like we could save and convert into what you guys need and really reset its life. This is the best portion of that building to be able to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Yep.
So, yes, that is the renovation. And so as we move to the new, it's very similar in that we may do away with that existing portion of the building altogether, create a completely new building, but we still see an advantage to locating the elementary right here, near that parking lot and drop-off, so they can have their own place base back here as well and keep that separated from the rest of the building.
There'd be, just still the, just the one entrance?
Yes. Well, there would be another secondary entrance back here, yes, with a secure entrance for the elementary.
Okay.
Yes, but I'm thinking from the middle school, yes, this is the primary middle school entrance.
What's the population split, elementary and middle school projection? You have 1,100, how much are you projecting for elementary or middle school?
I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. It's about 250 to 300 at the elementary and about 800 at the middle.
Which is not what we have now, but.
It's a little larger than the current elementary. I don't want to say it's.
Okay.
250 to 300. Off the top of my head, it's 250 to 300.
That's the projection. Okay.
So with the elementary students at the top, correct? And there's not a formal entrance on that side? Or I guess, I guess my question is, what was the discussion of, or the thinking in terms of whether or not there needed to be two, you know, an entrance for the elementary and an entrance for the, you know, middle school?
Yes. Currently, you still have two entrances for pickup and drop-off.
Right.
Until school starts. And then when school starts, there is one main entrance for the building. And so it's my understanding, so, so if I go back to this, there is a drop-off for elementary over here.
Right.
And they can also drop off for buses and enter here.
Right.
But once school starts, this door down here is the main entrance for where the main offices are.
It's the same design as all of our other K-8s. It's a pick-and-pick, hills, it's a one-stop, and there's a one-stop shop in Westport, it's a one-stop, so we're all going.
So after school starts, there's still just one place you can enter?
Yes.
But, okay.
Control entrance during the day. And so we would do the same with this and the entrance would be located here, although you could still, these students could still be picked up and dropped off before and after school on the north side of the building. Okay? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Other questions? The organization of the building, again, is very similar to the other ones and very straightforward with large spaces in the middle and classrooms on the north and south.
Wait, are you done?
Uh-oh.
Questions?
Yeah, I do, thank you. I, I.
You know what he asked you for, questions?
Excuse me. Well, I didn't know if you had a question. I do have some questions, Brandon, while I'm here, that are not necessarily about this, but Denise and I are liaisons to the community task force that is studying all these recommendations by our architects. And one of the, one of the things that's come up in our discussions, and I'd really like to hear from you guys on this, is renovation versus new construction. This has created a lot of anxiety. And people, I think, I think people in the task force are trying to get a handle on what is renovation? When we talk about a building being renovated, is that, how would you characterize that?
Well, we, in this study, have broken down three levels of renovation, light, medium, and heavy. So it's almost on a per-condition basis. In this particular instance, when we're talking about Pershing, this would be heavy renovation, where the interior is gutted, some of the exterior is removed, and we're recreating that building but keeping the bones. But that's not the case in all of the elementary schools and other schools. So it depends, is my best answer.
All right. That's, we're gonna, we're gonna be in a dialogue here. So specifically in the case of Reed and Picken, what is the scope of renovation there? Is it light, medium, or?
The portion that we are keeping is heavy renovation. A complete.
Characterize that.
So all mechanical systems, all electrical, finishes, walls, if it is not structural and it's not a floor, it's being removed. And it's not a roof, it's being removed. So you end with a shell and then you go back and you recreate that building with all new systems, all new furniture, or furnishing, walls where they need to be to create size of spaces, all new plumbing. So, yeah, that's, that's what we would consider heavy renovation.
One of the, one of the issues, or one of the stressors for the group, I think, is, do we advocate for the functionality of, of a brand-new building that could cost anywhere from 5% to 15% more than a heavily renovated existing building? Or do we advocate for the thrift of a renovated building? And I guess, one of the, one of the questions behind that question is, how much compromise is there? Does, can you, can you achieve a greater ideal in a new building than you can in a renovated building? And how much of a compromise is the renovated building over what you're able to achieve in a new building?
So if I'm understanding the question right, we always approach a renovation project, an existing building, as if we're gonna keep it. How can we, can, first of all, can we renovate this to give it new life and to extend it as if it was a new building? And if we can, how can we do that and what's its cost going to be? And is there a value to actually keeping an old building or not? We approached these, Picken and Reed, the same way. How can we save these old buildings? And they have great bones and we really believe that they can be saved.
Well, we've talked about bones. We've talked about the bones.
Right. But at the same time, there will be compromises because the column layout, the width of the building, there are things that are gonna force the smaller spaces to be in the existing building. But there's a value in those existing buildings that I cannot put a money, put a number on, and that is its historical value. And so if there is, if there is something there, I, you know, that's, that's something that I believe the district has to wrestle with. But the existing building, to convert it into today's standards, we are going to have to compromise to make it work.
This one, Pershing is quite different than that.
Correct.
Because, I mean, to use the sort of most base level, you would, from the outside, you would recognize Picken, you would recognize Reed, right? It's like, okay, yeah, it looks nothing like that once you step inside the front door. With Pershing, it might bear a faint family resemblance, that one little chunk remains and everything else is gone. So in terms of the commitment to the place itself and the historic significance, et cetera, if we were to come up with some value place on that, it would be higher for Picken and Reed significantly, I would think, than Pershing. Because I'm not sure you would look at this and think, oh, yeah, that's Pershing, I remember that.
Right. There's an iconic part to Reed and Picken, it sounds like what you're saying.
Yeah.
At the front of that building. Well, what is the value of that when you're having to compromise getting the real spaces that you may want, or the layout you may want, to really make that function the best that it can for the next 800 years, right? So I'm a big proponent of keeping the existing buildings. Don't get me wrong, that's what I always want to do. But here, they are limiting you in what they allow.
The difference in cost projection for renovation and new construction for Pershing, like $2.3 million, different payment.
Along those lines, yeah. Yeah, the number is much smaller. Tim, did I answer your question?
You, you're part of this discussion too, Denise.
It is quite a, the committees, I mean, they're really working hard to try to understand what this renovation would look like versus new and keeping everything applicable for both Reed students and Picken students. And so that's their focus and they're just trying to get a picture. And this, you know, Tim has the experience and expertise to kind of understand what that looks like, but for the rest. And this, you know, Tim has the experience and expertise to kind of understand what that looks like, but for the rest of the folks and me, we, everyone's trying to picture, is this just gonna be like a new building set inside the old shell, and that's
In some ways, yes.
And that's kind of what it's.
You're gonna walk in, it's gonna feel like new space.
And I think that's what many now are thinking in terms of their, both reno versus new. So it was, it's important to me that if that's what we are telling them, that that's what we do. And then not later come back and go, well, this was what you said, a new building in a, or, you know, a building in an old shell. So it's good to hear what you had to say, and I hope, and Tim can explain that to us.
One of the things I did share with them is that the cost estimates do not reflect just painting and, and new floor covering. This is, these are, these are big construction projects. And, and from what I am able to discern is that it is, we're stripping it back to the frame.
I think the description maybe light, heavy, or light, medium, heavy, heavy, duty heavy, might be helpful.
Would you call it full octane?
Full.
He's got a fourth, full octane is the fourth category. You guys can all call it something different, it'll be difficult, if you will.
Well, think of the scope of what they've said on, it would take two years of relocating the students in order to do what you have to do on those campuses, right? That's a reality. You're gonna have to complete the gut and refill and build around it. And those are gonna be great buildings when they're done, if that's what they choose, but.
Exactly.
A new build if we want.
This is more than a full gut renovation.
And this is a knockdown.
Is the timeframe the same on a full reno?
I'm sorry.
No.
Is the timeframe the same or different if we?
Build new or renovate?
Yes.
The timeframe would be shorter if you're building new than renovating.
Okay, so that's good to know, too.
Well, my thing is that you're gonna, the committee's gonna decide one way or the other, and whatever they decide is what will end up being there, we'll never have a new building and a renovated building, say, which one do you like best? We're, we're not gonna have one. They're gonna pick one, and it's, if it passes, then that's what we're gonna have. And they'll never know what the other one would have looked like, 'cause we won't do that. So, I mean, to me, you don't know when you say, well, I've got, in a renovation, I've gotta work with some of the bones that are already there, so I couldn't, you know, this is what I gotta fit in. Well, if that's what you do, you won't ever know that would have been bigger someplace else, because we won't have it.
And I think, Bruce, what they're struggling over is that if the decision went to do a new for one of the schools and a reno for the other, then they would have that comparison. I think that's what they're, they're very concerned with, just being thought.
There's a real sensitivity to that.
Yeah, yeah. And they're, and they're very.
Goose and gander.
Yep, they're very, very sensitive to making sure, that whatever they bring to us, they can justify. And with good rational thinking, what they're bringing to us is a recommendation, and that makes sense, so.
Not, not all renovations are the same, right? And all new construction necessarily would be the same, it shouldn't be. Yeah, that, that's exactly right. Some are more iconic than others.
One consideration I'd add in there is, whether it's a new building or a renovation, they're working on the same program, the types of spaces that are in there. And if you configure it a little bit differently, the bottom line of the new school has three of these, so the equity piece is embedded in that budget, but it's not.
Well, that's nice to hear. Okay, gotcha.
And one thing I would add.
They want you at the Thursday night meeting.
That's for Coroner with Hollis and Miller.
And one thing I would add is, the, maybe the struggle with the existing building is its location on the site, because those sites are already small. So it's pulled away from the street, and it's using up some land that maybe we could reorganize a little more efficiently. And the floor-to-floor heights are what they are, and we may wanna give it a little bit more room between floors if we were to do new for mechanical systems and things. So it's limiting, but that doesn't mean that once we're done, it's not going to feel like this is a new space on the inside, right? So it just means we're gonna have to think about the project differently if we're renovating the existing versus being able to use that land to do a new project as we would if we started a new project.
So I know we veered off into Reed, but again, other task conversations, so I just have a question back on the Pershing presentation. Would you?
Oh, that.
Oh, that. Oh, yes, okay. So I think my question is, what is the value of keeping, you've only proposed keeping
That portion.
One portion of it, and I'm very familiar with this school. So what was the value of that? How would you define? Like, it's not a historic building.
It isn't.
It's not beautiful, it's not.
Right, but floor-to-floor heights are good.
Okay.
The space inside, the, the width of the building is good. There's, it's easy enough to, to remove the interior and rebuild it in a way that functions according to what, the way you would want it to for an elementary school. The other portions, the roof is low, there's not enough volume to get the mechanical systems in, to give the air conditioning it needs, things like that. So it is limiting in a number of ways as you move north of this two-story bar. Two-story bar, we can work with easily, the structural elements of it works within what we need.
I'll be interested to hear what David Bridget and all have to say about this, because in some ways, your description of that, of the, the to-be-saved section is kind of damning with faint praise. It's like, that's not as bad as the rest of it, right? And that can be saved, that can be saved. I'm, I'm exaggerating, I think, what, what you said, but it's really. It's, it's okay, we can make that work. The rest of it, even in a renovation, has to go away, right? So it's, it's in some ways, a new building retaining one, one small.
Yeah, I would say it would be, it would be like any other renovation where we would go into a heavy renovation, there are things that we're gonna have to work around that will give compromise. That's always the case, and that's okay. So maybe that's why it's coming across that way. But I think it's a solid bill, I think it, it will meet the needs of that elementary school very well.
But looking at your reconstr, your new, you basically put identically right back same place.
Yes.
For two point three million dollars. All you've done is just tore it down and put the same thing back up.
Essentially, that's what we're showing for this conceptual level.
Yeah, I mean, no footprint change, nothing changes, per se, as to whether you keep that or not. And I'm not saying one way or the other, it's just, it's the same thing.
Yeah.
That you're proposing to build it or renovate it.
Same spot.
Same footprint, same spot, same footprint, that, so.
Right.
And that's two point three million dollars more.
Yeah.
To have a brand-new material, construction, to do it with no limitations whatsoever.
Right.
That's what you're saying.
I see what you're saying.
I mean, cost.
Two point three million, I know, out of fifty.
If we were in trial, Brandon, I would be objecting to the mischaracterization of your testimony by these two. I'm whispering that to my friend here. Thank goodness we aren't. You are, just got objected to, it just happened. Thank you.
Ready to move on?
Thank you very much.
So as a reminder, this information will be provided by Dr. Shaw and myself, in some fashion, on Thursday night, to our community task force members. Mr. David Hall and Ms. Bridget Dirks requested that we send an invitation to our community task force, asking them to be available to meet on Monday, October fifteenth. They are determined to deliver the recommendation report to the board at the October sixteenth meeting.
Awesome. I just appreciate that.
So we are on track. We're hopeful that works out. The idea being that the final report would be accepted by the community task force on Monday, October fifteenth.
I really appreciate that.
We have shared within the, that is your intention.
I don't know if I'm being subtle here, but I'd really like to stay on schedule. This is a big project, and they've put a lot of effort in, and I wanna move forward. Excellent. I really appreciate all their help. That's fantastic.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you both. Okay, so we, are we moving on to eight one oh one, public comments, which we have none of tonight, which is great? And now we will move on to Print Range is gonna talk to us about focus area one, goal two update.
Hello.
Good evening.
A group of my colleagues.
Yeah, you have a posse with you.
I do.
We're excited to see you.
So do you prefer that I laser point this way or that way?
Well, turn to where.
Go back, go, go this way, this way.
No, suit yourself.
I'll go this way. I'm, I'm, it's made in the face, I'm really concerned about that. Okay, so, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
We are excited to be here presenting to you the focus area goal, focus area one, goal two in the strategic plan. So what, in a nutshell, what we're gonna do this evening is we're gonna roll out the academic success and graduate outcomes scorecard. If you remember last month, we rolled out the climate and culture scorecard at the district level, at the grade span level, and then also at the school site level. So the end goal of this presentation is to roll that scorecard out. We will do that kind of in a slow fashion throughout this presentation. I will start, and then other leaders will come up and, and fill in the, behind me, talking about the areas that they supervise. So that kind of sets the stage for what we're doing here, and I will go from there. So the first couple slides here are review, we covered these in the last presentation. So the strategic plan, our current strategic plan, has four focus areas. And we are, tonight we are in, we are still up in this area up here, student success and learning support. That's where this academic success scorecard fits best. Within focus area one, we have three goals. And last month, with the culture and climate scorecard, it hit on goal one. Tonight, we're focusing on goal two here, which when we blow that out, it looks like that. There it is.
Ta-da!
Easier to see. So, you know, I, the, the key phrase there in the middle of that goal two is engaging relevant person. And so that is driven deep within our system right now. I think every teacher in the classroom, every administrator understands and knows what verb means, or what it stands for. What we are attempting to do with this scorecard is metric what that is. So how do we know that kids are learning based on being in an engaging, engaging, relevant, personalized learning environment? And so that, that really is the intent of these scorecards at the elementary, middle, and high school level and divisions. So we, I, we wanted to start, I don't think we did this last time, we wanted to start to kind of take a snapshot from a thirty-thousand-foot view of the district. So this, the one thing I'm gonna say is, this is as of, this is unofficial, 'cause this was the count date last Wednesday. We have until October the fifteenth to kind of make sure that data's clean. But as of last Wednesday, that's the, the total district enrollment. And then when you break this out by lunch status on one side of student subgroups, you kind of see how that, that, that total enrollment breaks out. So I think a couple things to draw your eye to are, number one, are, when you add the free and the reduced lunch together, it's about the same as what our full pay kids are, it's about fifty-fifty. Then when you come on this side, the majority of our kids are white, and then the ethnic, the rest of the ethnic breakdown is below that. And then stability and mobility rates are, are below. When you break it out farther by division, by grade span, you've got elementary, middle, and high school. Again, this is unofficial counts, and we will clean this data up and, and get it cleaned up for Desi by October the fifteenth. The one, the thing that I wanna draw your eye to again are within these boxes here. So you go across on lunch status, it's, it's pretty similar across the divisions, it doesn't differ that much. Same with ethnicity. It's very much the same across the student subgroups, and its stability and mobility does not change a whole lot. So it, what this does, it helps put to rest the idea that, oh, it's way different than the high school than it is at the elementary school. No, it's not. It's, the lunch status breaks out very similar, so does the student subgroups.
Can you tell me if stability and mobility, to me, if you're stable, you're maybe not mobile, but obviously are, 'cause you go way, that's a hundred and fifty percent. Or, so how do we define if you're stable, to me, would mean you're staying there, and mobile would mean you're moving, but those?
It's a great question, Bruce, great question. So the, the stability means if you've got a stability rate of ninety-one percent, roughly ninety percent of the kids start the school year in one school and they end it there. However, the eight percent that aren't doing that are churning a whole lot.
Okay.
There, there, there's a fifty percent churn rate with those kids.
Okay.
So how you read that? So if you remember from last presentation, the way we're kind of putting data around these scorecards and, and, and the strategic plan is in two ways. So the first thing is the priority metrics. Those are the things, the data points that we kind of gathered a whole bunch of information through S L T last year, got a whole bunch of feedback. And those are the things that go on the scorecard. We have priority metrics on the culture, climate, culture scorecard, we have them on this scorecard. So, and what we are calling this scorecard is the academic success and graduate outcomes scorecard, kind of a big long title there. But what it is, it's all the student, not all, it's a lot of the student achievement measures we collect at the elementary, middle, and high school level. So it's gonna be things like I R E D I at elementary and middle school. It's gonna be, we have, we're going to include the math tests, it's going to have to be included at the elementary and middle school level. And of course, assessments at the high school level, of course, failure and passing rates at the middle school and high school level, and then graduate outcomes at the high school level. So those are, and you're gonna see how these are divided out when I pass these scorecards out. So those are all the priority metrics, and I'm gonna talk about the process measures here shortly. So the first thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna pass this, the initial scorecard out. So what you have is you've got, the, the top one should be elementary, the one in the middle is middle school, and the bottom one is high school. And on the back of those are the definitions of what those metrics are. So what these are, it's the elementary division, so it's the elementary as a, as a, from a thirty-thousand-foot view. It's the middle school division at that same view, and it's the high school at that same view. And then Dr. Anderson and Dr. Dublin are going to come up and talk to you about individual's school scorecards, 'cause it breaks down that far. So Kicku will have their own, Eugene Field will have its own. But this is just those divisions. So a couple things on the slide that I'm gonna draw your attention to are these things. So number one, you've got a demographic box there. So that demographic box is just what I showed you. It's enrollment, it's F R L rates, it's lunch, it's ethnicity, it's stability and mobility across that grade span, okay? Then when you, the, the boxes below that, below the demographics where I'm pointing right there, those are the graduate outcomes. And the neat thing about this is when a principal gets their own school site one, they will have their feeder pattern graduate outcomes. So if I'm, I was the principal of McBride, so I would have Kickapoo's graduate outcomes on my scorecard, so I can make a connection to how my kids are eventually going, are performing at the high school level on those graduate outcomes. So that's the left side of that card, demographics, graduate outcomes, and then in the middle here where it's really busy, I know it's really busy, it's all these cells and rows and columns. Those are the major achievement markers per division, per elementary, per middle, per high school. So this, on, on your screen here, this is an elementary card. So the top of this is just I R E D proficiency rates, how many kids were advanced proficient on I R E D. What their growth on I R E D was, beginning of year test versus end of year test, and the bottom one is map assessments. And the thing about the map, map assessment is, the map assessment scores are from last, the ones we got last December, 'cause we haven't got the ones that we've taken in spring as of yet. Hopefully we'll get those in December or something.
So these are actual?
Those are actual.
Real, all of our elementary combined?
That's, elementary combined, yes, ma'am. Elementary combined, middle school combined, high school combined. That data is live.
Okay.
The data you're gonna see on the scorecards that Dr. Anderson and Dr. Dublin pass out are not live, it's scrambled, so. And again, the back of, the back of each of those cards have definitions for what those metrics are.
Brandon, I think one, one thing that's really significant here is that, that middle column, the percentage changes. If that's in most assessments, that's what we miss. We get sort of this number, a point in time in space, and we use that to rank, and do other, I think, unjustifiable things. And that really does focus on the growth from point A to point B, right? And, because we all know that students are gonna enter at different places, right? And you can have someone who enters here and goes up here, and that's great, that's value-added. But if someone enters here and comes here, there's considerably more value-added, even though that final mark, right, is a business time.
Yes.
So I think that's really important to, to include that. I, I think that's a really nuanced view of something that we oversimplified way too.
And that's the good thing about I R E D, that it's got that, that metric, the ability to metric that issue. Okay, so, so those are all the priority metrics on, and, and as you can see, the other thing that I was gonna say about that slide is, when you look through those, the, the climate and culture one is really neat, 'cause they all look the same. Elementary looked the same, middle school looked the same. Elementary looked the same, middle school looked the same, high school looked the same because they were the same metrics. These are not that way because kids at fifth grade take different assessments than you do when you're in high school. So the middle and elementary look the most alike, the high school looks vastly different because they take different assessments than, than any of our elementary schools do. So that, that's why they're, these look different than the climate and culture ones because the assessments we give kids are different depending on what grade level they're in. So those are the, those are the, the priority metrics. The other thing I, we, and a lot of this presentation contains are process measures. So the other bit of information and data that we collect to support this strategic plan and this goal area and focus area are individual data pieces monitored by departments within the district. And so the leaders you're going to hear this evening that have helped put this presentation together, they've helped write this big paper that, that's loaded into board docs are from these different areas. They're from athletics, assessment accountability, learning, or the childhood education, elementary set of learning and learning support partnerships. So they, they keep individual data that we call process measures that don't fit into the scorecard, yet they are high-yield and are valuable. So that being said, we're going to dive right into that first process measure, and I'm going to turn the mic over, the podium over to Dr. Dublin, who will talk about extracurriculars.
Thank you. Well, good evening. It is my privilege to come and talk about athletics, the extracurricular strategy. And so I want to say first that I do co-champion this strategy with Marty Moore, so all mistakes are hers. So that's not true, but she's going to pipe up if I make a mistake and fill in if needed. So for extracurricular, our two process measures that we're looking at are participation or our grade level, and type of activity disaggregated by those subgroups, and then also the impact of set participation as compared to non-participation in attendance and discipline. So those are the two process measures that we're measuring in this strategy. So just for a picture, the first slide we'll look at is the overall number of students in six through 12. So to train your eye a little bit, this is just six through 12. Left-hand side, S P S overall, so that together. The enrollment, 12,501, and then below that, 62% of our kids are involved in extracurriculars. And then it's broken down by the three subgroups. So free is 52, reduce 61, full 70%. And then, of course, to the right, we have the middle school, learning team, and high school broken out.
Shane, is extracurricular activities only school-sponsored activities?
It's actually three groups, extracurricular, co-curricular, and athletics altogether. So this is, and this is the amount of unique kids, and I'll show you the next slide that will explain that a little better. So this is a broken down by those three groups, and this can be duplicate kids, Jerry, so five, Shane Dublin could be in multiple categories, whereas this one is just the total number. This one, back, one, four, and the one is just total number of kids involved. So the co-curricular column again, similar setup, we've broken it by subgroup, 36% of our kids, six through 12, are involved in co-curricular, and there's subgroups below. Extracurricular, 26% of our kids, and then athletics, 29% of our kids. Overall, six through 12, involved in extracurricular activities, or excuse me, athletics. So again, that is, could be duplicate, and so I could be a kid in multiple, I could be in band and also in sport.
Do we have any idea how many there are, like in two, and then how many are in three, et cetera?
We probably do. I don't, I don't know that, but we could probably get to that.
I'm kind of even thinking that there, I would expect that there are a lot of duplicate kids.
I think that's right. We have a lot, yeah, a lot of kids that are in band, but also are in a sport.
I know, from all the places I drive around, that.
As, as do I.
And I know that you do. I see you at some of those.
She's in those numbers, I saw. Yeah. The, the next one, we're going to talk about, and this is just a sample, so we don't have the discipline numbers in this presentation, it's in the paper. But for example, our attendance, attendance is one of the process measures. So if you look at this, kids attendance comparison for students participating versus not participating in all grades, those participating get 94%, and those not participating get 89%. So a 5% difference. Then again, middle school division, 3% difference, and high school division, 7%. Yes. Denise was first, go for it.
So I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to clarify. So give, give me an example of a co-curricular versus an extracurricular activity. I think we're very clear on the place. Just throw, just throw some activities out there. Like I said, I think I know, but I think it's important.
Just know for recording purposes, we need to come to the microphone. So co-curricular would be like a choir, show choir, band.
So something they have a class during the day?
A class during the day, and the activity spills over. Extracurricular is not a class activity and engaging usually after school.
Like science fairs, Olympias.
Clubs, yeah. Being extracurricular.
Good.
But they are still school.
But there's a sponsor.
They're not extracurricular. That would be club or?
That's correct.
Thing that may be all the, all Persian kids got a soccer fatigue together.
Yes.
Okay.
That does not count it at all, right?
No, that was my question.
Like, it would not be scouts, but they may all be at the same.
Hot steam club after school, so that would be extracurricular.
I'm going to ask context questions, of course I am. So these numbers are for this year, last year?
Seventeen, eighteen.
Okay.
Last school year, yes.
And then, so looking at these numbers, I would guess is nothing new for you all.
Correct.
Of course, I mean, you guys look at these numbers.
Yeah.
But I guess I'm wondering, what is the, what is the focus moving forward? Is there going to be like a scorecard for this to where you're looking at how you're trending year to year? Or what is the goal?
Specific to athletics, extracurricular?
Yeah, just, yeah, because right now we're just seeing these kind of raw numbers telling us how many people are involved.
Right.
How that breaks down, but what does that tell you?
Yes.
And then what does that tell me?
Right.
And then what is the goal moving forward with looking at how this is trending and where you want to be and?
Right. So, so your first part of your question was the first time looking at it for us or not, and it's not.
Right.
So we brought, and I can't remember if it was February or March, we brought a smaller sample of this to you guys as an update and kind of focused on middle school mission.
Yes, I remember that. Yep.
And so that, to that point, that's how we're monitoring that. We're continuing to do that looking forward, monitor our middle school numbers.
Because you set goals for where you want that to be and, okay.
So the second part of your question, I have a slide for that actually next.
Okay, okay.
It is kind of our conclusion and next step. So what do we do next, right? So we're continuing to monitor programming, programming, the participation, looking at these numbers periodically. And the goal is to increase, but I will say that not just add no cap, because at some point, we're going to have capacity. We don't want necessarily, we want, we want kids to be able to be in possibly band and switch and choose athletics. And they may drop out of band to go to athletics, or they may stay in both. So we don't know that our numbers are just going to continue to grow astronomically similar to explore, that they've kind of been a law. So I say that kind of carefully. But within that is also identifying our subgroups that aren't participating at the same level as others. And that's where now we start to develop strategies to engage those subgroups, which we have not done yet. That's our next work with this data. It's highlighting the data where subgroups are not participating on an equal basis.
And so is this data, the last few slides, if I were drawing a Venn diagram, going to be looking at this as well? I mean, like, how, how does participation in this impact the needle over here?
Yeah. Well, specifically, we look at attendance and discipline, so that's kind of our two process measures for this. So while academics is a specific process measure, I would say that it relates to attendance and discipline. Does that help a little bit?
Well, I'm just trying to get the bigger strategic picture of what is it that the scorecard is going to shed insight into?
Sure.
It, and making sure that these other things aren't in isolation, that they're not being viewed at.
Sure.
Wouldn't engagement be the third thing that we would be hoping for, other than attendance and discipline? Because that's one of the things we've seen in the research, is that if you're involved in these other things, you feel more engaged in the process, which improves your.
Yeah, at some points, we'd probably be able to sort of align these variables and see if the greater the engagement, the greater the academic performance.
Yes, I think so.
I mean, that, I would presume that would be the case, but we needed to do a careful question.
The last thing I have as far as next steps, we are analyzing feedback from, from kids. We do surveys from our principals, from parents, from teachers as to how we might improve programming, what kids want, what we're doing that may not be engaging and pulling kids in. So that's our, an ongoing process to continue to improve our program. Okay, so I think next I pass this to Amy St. John, and she's going to take us with 1.2 pieces.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Hi, Amy.
Hello. Hello. So with the garnering of feedback, as you know, I've spoken with you before regarding the tool that we use, this Panorama. And the process measures up to this point have really been about just response rates. So it was implementation of the product, it was getting folks used to that as a platform. And so the process measures for that have been really centered around the percentages of those responses, and we were seeking to increase those percentages. We have heard from Panorama, the product, that we as a school district are really strong, which is a really good compliment, because we range somewhere in the 80% as you'll see on the next slide, in some of the categories with our teacher groups and things, and I'll talk about in just a second. With the same process measures kind of running across the top there and then comparing the two years of data that we have for the different categories with the fall engagement, you can see that we've had a nice increase of the 63% to the 68%, and that's the participation of those that had, had responded to that. So roughly speaking, an in-size for that would be somewhere around 2,500 out of the 3,300 that would have, the survey would have gone to. And the same would be true for the fall leadership. Again, we saw a little bit of a bump. I think that's a lot to do with just the, we'll say, the marketing of it, just getting used to the product, there's a new platform the first year, and then as the time goes on, it becomes something that you're more used to. Another piece that I believe is really adding to it is the survey is available for other purposes, or the platform is available for other purposes. So as we've had other surveys through the years that we've utilized either, we've used either Survey Monkey, or we've used even just a Google Response Form, Panorama, there's an unlimited license, so we're able to convert that. And that brand recognition just in itself, and that platform recognition, I believe, is really helping us. We've developed a survey calendar, so we're really trying also not to over saturate. As you know, any time that you're trying to survey folks, you don't want to have too many surveys open at once. And so really putting that on a survey calendar has helped with that as well. Again, we've seen a nice increase in our spring student classroom, as well as the, the spring student school. And so those are the ones that are offered, obviously, in the spring months. With our spring family, that shows as an in-size because it can't show as a percentage, it's an open link. So that's the one that's just open and available to the public for them to respond. It's hard to gauge that one. We talked with Panorama on what's a good number, because when it's open, it's open. So one of the things that we are working towards this coming year, and I'll talk about it in the next steps, is really helping buildings to market that, maybe in a couple of different ways than what they've done in the past. We've utilized, say, their newsletters, their email lists that they are used to communicating with their families, but are there other ways that we can produce that in a new format? The spring teacher, you, you see a decrease, but what I wanted to tell you in regards to the in-size is that it really didn't change much on the number that responded. You just have, the denominator had changed a little through the year, and that's because it had gone out to a larger group the second year. That's part of us just being able to gather more into the mix. And so we weren't overly concerned at first. That was the one that we reached out to Panorama and said, what's a good number? When teachers respond to that, if you're in the 80s, they said it's a high five. So that was a good thing. It's still a number that we want to look at and make sure, and again, help with the marketing and making sure that people are answering the survey, so. With the conclusions of that, as I mentioned, we're going to continue to monitor those participation rates. That's one piece that we know that valued feedback goes right back into that culture climate survey that we shared with you last month. And so we want to make sure that the buildings are utilizing that. It's also creating nice, we'll say, story starters between the buildings in terms of their teachers and the principals and being able to have conversations that can better support their classrooms. As well as the, really the plans for a turnkey approach, as I mentioned, the survey calendar, we also, Panorama actually provides a plethora of resources that we want to really make sure that the buildings have at their fingertips. It's all the way to posters that they could put on the wall, tweets that they could send out. They really just kind of set the buildings up for success with that. And now that we've moved from the implementation stage really into the next level, those are the pieces that we really want to work with the buildings to ensure that they have at their fingertips. As we move into this next year, I'm excited to say that we would be moving this strategy out of this area currently that's in the focus area one, goal two, and really putting it into the communications area, which I'm very excited to work with Stephen and his team on, because really, a survey is a communication of sorts. It's a, it's a tool that we can utilize and get, expand into that. As well, it was revised just slightly to include, it's the feedback not only from the students and parents, but it's really from the employees too, because we're excited to hear what they have to say and want to get that feedback to the places that needs to, to really improve. So with that, do you have questions about that section?
I don't have questions, but I want to commend you for limiting the number of those surveys. That's the smartest thing I've heard you guys say in a while. I heard students, parents, and employees like cheering in the background when you said that, because you can overwhelm to the point where people don't want to participate. Then we're not going to get anything helpful. And I'm curious what all those people think. So thank you for that part.
Yes, yes. It's coordinated effort, so very good.
Questions, anyone?
Okay, we're going to send Dr. Dublin.
All right, Nicole.
So I'm here to talk about 1.2.7, which traditionally has been where we have reported about Ignite. So for the last four years, this has been where we've given you an Ignite update. So as a reminder, we primarily use Bright Bites as a way of measuring the success of our one-to-one initiative. So we'll give you an update on that today, as well as teacher feedback around support. So we believe Ignite has been successful because it has been heavily supported, and so you'll see that in the data as well. So Bright Bites is a national survey tool, speaking of surveys. So it has informed us from the beginning. So if you remember before Ignite even began, it told us what buildings were most ready for the system change. So we use that from the beginning in 2014 and 15. So you can see where we have grown as a system. So we see about 18,000 responses in our collection, and we collect twice a year. So Bright Bites is another organization that tells us we have huge response rates on this. And so we are actually currently in the middle of our fall collection right now, so we'll have our new data come in. So one thing that we look at, a good collection increases about five points. So you can see we've seen higher than average trends in those areas. And I do want to point to access specifically. So we are considered an exemplary district in the eyes of Bright Bites nationally for the work we've done around access. I think it's great when I pull up outside of elementary schools and see every kid walk out with a black bag in their hand. I think that speaks to your commitment that it doesn't matter what money you have or don't have, we are going to give you a device. We also currently have about 1,500 hotspots of internet access that we provide to families who don't have it. I think we take that for granted as a system because it's just the way we've done business for five years.
We don't take it for granted.
Thank you. And I don't take it for granted because we know that you have made a tremendous dent in this work. So I'm going through leadership Springfield now, and the Northwest Project points to what we do with hotspots is making a huge impact in that community. So we are proud that we are one of the largest providers of hotspots in the country. So we thank you for your commitment to that, and we intend to even provide hotspots to students.
Nicole, these numbers indicate the number of responses to?
It's actually the, the case score. So the way that Bright Bites does this, and the paper is going to outline it a little bit better for you, but each part of this is an overall score that goes up to a total. So this is a number of responses. This is actually the score that we earned over time. So you can see that increase in score. One area that we know we continue to work in is classroom. And so that's where we see use of the four Cs, so we're continuing our focus there, and that's where digital citizenship comes in. So that work there is never done, as you know. That's a continuing, moving, important work that we do to educate both our staff and our students on how to be good digital citizens. So that's where our focus remains, and again, we're proud of what we've done with access, and we'll continue to train around that area. So this really speaks to the job embedded support that Ignite has provided. So from the beginning, the board approved nine blended learning specialists that have supported our fifty-four sites. So they've provided over forty-seven hundred hours of job embedded support last school year. So those are coaches that are in buildings every single day. They don't have offices, they have backpacks, and they heavily support our teachers. When we see a seventy percent satisfaction rate with that, my heart sinks a little until I dig into their anecdotal notes, and it's, "Give us more." So I'm not satisfied, because I need more time with them, we need more of them, so.
That's what it looks like even looking at that. That's not quite enough.
Not quite enough. So we, again, feel that we provide a lot of support to our teachers, but we know that there's always more work to be done. Sometimes we talk about, "Are technology integration initiatives ever finished?", right? So we say no, because we know we're continually making updates to the products, and we actually went through our first refresh cycle this year. So our devices that went out year one were retired, and we had new devices that went out to this.
It would be interesting, I assume that over the next few years, the language will shift from supportive in the Ignite initiative and successfully in from the Ignite, sort of, that will fall away, and it will be to enhance student learning, or whatever the case may be.
And I think that really speaks to our next step. So one of the nice things about Bright Bites is a few of the questions are, most of the questions are nationally normed, but we do provide our own questions, so we can make the shift from support to, "How is it shifting instruction in your classroom?", right? So at the beginning, you have to get them to use devices, and then, "What are they using them for?" So the next conversations are just continuing that access for all program and making sure we have the right number of devices in homes and that we're meeting needs. So that is a moving target all the time. So our IT director, Bruce Douglas, has a good job of, we monitored the data we're getting from Bright Bites, and we're the right number of hotspots, so that we're not misusing funds in any way. We also, again, this speaks to what you were just saying, making sure that the modern tools are enhancing learning at this point, so we've moved past the implementation phase to the instruction phase of the support that we're doing. Launch is coming, it's happening. You might have heard about this little thing called launch. So next board meeting on October sixteenth, we'll actually give you a comprehensive update on what we've been doing for the last twelve months regarding launch. But our recommendation is to go ahead and change the strategy to full launch into it. So currently, this has been a strategy primarily around modern learning tools or what we've done with Ignite. So we are suggesting a change to add and increase access to high-quality virtual courses for all students. So currently, launch doesn't have a home, so this would include it in the strategy.
Great.
Any questions for me?
Questions?
All students at all levels?
For virtual courses? That's a good question. So you know, we do have...
Yeah, it came up in MSBA.
It did. It came up today. So in the summer, we do offer online academies all the way down to first grade. So I think we do have a model where we're providing some version of virtual learning down to our youngest learners, so I think figuring out what that looks like at elementary level is definitely the next conversation. And we'll show next week, next month, two weeks, how launch has gone down to middle school now, so.
We will look forward to that, but Denise has a question.
She does.
Well, just to kind, when you were talking about the teachers, that seventy percent of teachers agreed or strongly agreed that they felt supported or needed support, I think sometimes we just take it for granted, and we kind of forget that we, that our teachers went from some at zero miles per hour, in terms of technology, what, four years ago, with very little access in their classroom, and even their own personal use of technology. So within one year, some were moving at fifty-five miles per hour, and then within two years, more, in three years, more, and worse. So, I mean, that is, I don't, when I think back in the day, you know, when I was in the classroom, that is a tremendous ask of teachers, especially those that were not into technology or techn...
The ones with the brakes on, so to speak.
Yeah, yeah, those that did not have access, first of all, and then those that did by writing grants and, you know, collecting up whatever they could pull into their classroom, and then teach themselves how to use them. We did have some technology instructional for a period of time, but we didn't have the tech, we didn't have the equipment to. So I'm just saying that that is pretty amazing that they have moved that fast, the teachers have moved that fast, and that, I think that probably we could do this survey every year, and as things change, we'll always have a number saying they need much support. So I don't know, we'll ever...
That may be true, but we were whispering to ourselves over here that nine doesn't seem like the right number there, but I'd better stop talking, or they'll start eyeballing me over here.
Nine, oh, in blended learning.
Blended learning specialists.
Oh, no, absolutely.
I hear very good things about that.
Yeah, and we continue to add, and we do need to do that, because that's supporting the teachers. And I think even when we were talking about Ignite originally, initially, and I think Bruce and I both were kind of thinking back to our days and thinking about how, wow, it's going to take a lot of, we'll need a lot of professional, a lot of professional learning, and then a lot of staff. So, we're not there, but this lets us know we still need to work on that, so.
Yeah, I would agree with both of you. I think that number is not, frankly, all that disappointing. I hear that, it's like, wow.
Well, I'm at ninety percent, kind of guy.
I mean, frankly, having worked with faculty my entire professional career, if there was ninety percent agreement, I would start to worry at that point, because that's just not our nature.
But I'm not worried about the, I mean, yes, we need to concentrate on that seventy percent, but if you don't look at that, and you just look at the fact that we have nine people dedicated to all that change, it's enormous how much work they're doing. It's also great how much people are putting into working toward this new way of teaching. It takes an amazing amount of work and skill and expertise, like, there's a lot of things to be said about this. But if you just don't even look at that seventy percent at all, there's a lot to be garnered about that information, and you keep pushing us to move, and I keep signing those new forms, so I know that at some point, you know, we can't just keep bringing it and not have more support for it. So we're aware of that, and we're really proud of the work that you're doing.
Was the percent seventy percent, you'd have to go back to that slide, so I can see, seventy percent agree, but seventy-two percent that actually have blended learning specialists at their site. So that number isn't much different, is it?
So one is saying that they agree that they're supported in general, so we have a lot of supports that aren't just the blended learning specialists. So the question is around, "Do you feel supported?", and then the second question is specifically, when we talk about the specialist in your building, "Do you feel supported?"
Okay, so those nine people...
Serve a hundred, all of our sites have a blended learning specialist. Even our early childhood sites have a blended learning specialist.
But they're sharing them with other people.
That's right.
So to say it that way is a little misleading, because they're not getting a hundred percent support.
Sure, they all have access to a blended learning specialist.
Right.
Some point during the week, yes. So those nine individuals see all of our sites weekly, and I think our principals can speak to the juggling act, but that's...
We're going rogue.
They are backpacks, they have good, we all have good, you've seen our backpacks, we have good...
They spend a lot of time on the road.
We're definitely going rogue, which I'm taking advantage of, because, you know...
And I will see you in a couple weeks.
But what I want to know is, at some point, I want you to tell us what you think is an adequate number of those blended learning specialists to adequately serve all the ambitious change that we're working toward, and I would like to know.
And my guess is, next year, whatever time, that seventy-two-ish or whatever that percentage was, I think will go up when it shifts from Ignite qua Ignite to enhancing student learning. I genuinely believe that there will be a perception that it's not about an initiative itself, I think it will be about student learning. And that's not a criticism of the initiative, it's simply focused that that's where they live.
You're moved out of the entrepreneurial portion, and you're just doing...
You're sustaining, you're sustaining your business.
You're giving that about being a program to a culture. Yeah.
Well, and they're training, and the teachers are training each other, because going to the beginning of the year, where our teachers were in charge of their professional learning, they were training each other, it was amazing to see that.
And the fact that we can deploy thirty thousand devices in four days shows that it is business as usual in Springfield. I mean, it is just the way we do it, so that's just...
I just want to make sure we're giving them enough support. It's outstanding, and thank you.
You're welcome.
I can see you want to sit down, you've tried four times.
I was just told I have to hurry.
Just go.
No, we'll...
Please.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions?
Charles is done.
I'm done, I'm done.
Thank you, Nicole. Hello, Missy.
Hello. They told me I can take as much.
Of course you can.
That's why you need Nicole to sit down.
Whatever you need, just go.
All right. So I'm 1.2.8, and Increase Access to Early Childhood Education for students who are at risk of not entering kindergarten at appropriate levels. And we've outlined or underlined there the important parts. We've got four measures there, and that's increasing the number of children screened for access. The parent engagement activities, we also call those group connections. At this point, we're just measuring those on the PAT side, and so they're open to any families that have children. And then, early childhood classrooms within the region, specifically within Springfield Public Schools right now, but I'll talk a little bit about that, and then increase the number of students ready for kindergarten. So please feel free to stop me at any time if you have questions. I know you will, you usually do. Okay, so, am I in the right place?
No.
I'm not. Oh, I went backwards and started forwards, and I went back to Nicole, so you want to come back up, Nicole? So, I, oh, I've got this upside down.
Nicole, could you provide us some technology support for our friends?
We should turn it around.
Okay, so that first process measure that we're going to talk about, and I'm going to put my glasses on so I can see my notes, that these are those early learning community events that we've talked about. In fourteen fifteen, we made a goal of increasing that by ten percent every year, and that first year, we increased it by about eighty-one percent. And so our growth has slowed down a little bit since then, and really, we had about, went about a fifteen percent increase the next year, and then stayed about the same this past year. A little change that we have made that might be a little misleading there is that we started only counting the events that at least one family showed up to. And so we were hosting lots of events. I think probably the best one to look up there is that K-Prep, which is what we do at each of the elementary schools. We were hosting a lot of them and trying to get them going, and I kept telling my parent educators, "Keep throwing it out there, families will start coming." And in some schools, they didn't. And so those aren't included in the count if nobody came to them. So that's a more realistic number of events that were attended by families, and in the paper, you'll also see, we had a significant increase of number of families who actually attended events, too. So the number of events, looks like it went down, but we had an increase there. Okay, right side up? Thank you all for attending our ribbon-cutting ceremony last week. We were well represented by the board, and it was an exciting time. This just gives us a good graphic over here of how our number of classrooms continues to grow. This number does include early childhood special education classrooms. We're always reluctant of, "Do we include them in our numbers, do we not?", but it's always a little misleading if we don't, but we sometimes have double-counted kids, they are half-day, four-day-a-week sessions, about twelve hours, or we're full-day, five-days-a-week with Wonder Years, which is about thirty-six hours, so it all depends on how you want to look at it. But total number of classrooms, early childhood classrooms within our district have gone in fifteen sixteen from forty to fifty-four in eighteen nineteen. If we stay on track as we've planned, that's an additional ten a year for the next two years also, which would get us to seventy-four by the year 2021. At least, assuming that early childhood special ed doesn't add any or lose any.
So that takes us to about fifteen hundred kids?
Well, it depends on your count. With, currently, with Wonder Years, we are a little over six hundred. If you put in the early childhood special ed classroom kids, which early childhood special ed has classroom kids and itinerant kids. So again, that count gets a little confusing. So their classroom count each year is somewhere between, around three fifty. So by the end of this year, we'll be around nine hundred classroom kids, but again, we've got some double counts in there, so it's a wiggly number, but, and then if, but each time we add ten classrooms, that's two hundred students for Wonder Years. So you can just add an additional four hundred to our six hundred, we'll be a little over a thousand in Wonder Years.
And these are four-year-olds?
These are, and again, that's where it gets confusing. Early childhood special ed, you can qualify the day you turn three years old, so you could be as many as three years away from kindergarten. Wonder Years is all one year prior to kindergarten, so four before August first. That's why we always struggle with, which numbers do we include at which time, but good questions. Okay, so another one of our process measures, I think you're probably pretty familiar with at this point, but it's kind of nice to have it all in a graph. There is the number, we started that kindergarten readiness study in two thousand and six, and there was some talk a couple of years ago about how our numbers went way down in the number of teachers participating, as you, or a number of students that we sampled, and as you can see, that's not necessarily true. We had a nice high number in two thousand and ten of three eighty-two, but otherwise, we've kind of maintained there between two hundred and eighty-four and three hundred and sixteen students, so it's been pretty consistent. Our hope, again, we try to get, we ask for five students out of each of our approximate one hundred classrooms, and so if we had all turned in, we'd have around five hundred, but that's still a pretty good response rate when you're looking for a study. So as you can see, two thousand and six, we had, our number of students not prepared for kindergarten was twenty-four point seven percent. That dropped to twenty point four percent in two thousand and ten. Two thousand and ten before this year was our highest funded early childhood programming. And what we've seen, if you do an overlay of the funding citywide of opportunities for kids, is that it exactly follows the kindergarten readiness, right? So we are very hopeful that we're going to see some gains there, too. So we had a little drop of not prepared last year, or an increase of preparedness, however you'd like to say that, from fourteen to sixteen, and we, you might notice that we're also on a two-year cycle now, instead of a four-year cycle all the time. And we're, those surveys are open as we speak. Kindergarten teachers got emails yesterday, and giving them their randomized class roster and asking them to fill out those five surveys. So between now and next Wednesday, we'll be encouraging them to get those completed, and so we'll have some good data again. Okay, so I'm already to conclusions and next steps. So eighteen nineteen, we are going to continue to focus on expanding Wonder Years and get all the kinks worked out, so the next two years of expansion are easy-peasy. The, I try not to sound quite so early childhood most of the time, sorry.
That's not what we were laughing at.
Okay. To streamline the expansion piece, honestly, it's been, it's been a big job, trying to figure out, trying to navigate the legislation and trying to figure out, we had a, pretty much a complete turnover in funding. We had been, Wonder Years had been a hundred percent Title I funded previously, and now we're about twenty-five percent Title I funded, and about seventy-five percent ADA, average daily attendance funded. So we're looking at attendance also, got our first attendance report from Amy St. John yesterday, and things are looking good. So our plans are still underway to streamline. We have a new platform that we're going to try to use, that my new assistant director, Tammy Flowers, brought in with her from a different district, a program that she actually wrote to do more of an auto qualification for students. Right now, that's been done all manually by my administrative assistant, and when she went from qualifying, you know, around two hundred and fifty kids to four hundred and fifty kids, and then this year, close to over six hundred kids, it's gotten to the point that it's like, "Oh, we really need to look for a different solution." So then walked Tammy with a product that she had used, and she said, "Why don't you try this?" So we're going to give that a whirl in the next couple months and hope that that is an answer to lots of our challenges. And then finally, in the paper, I talked quite a bit more about our Ella cohort, and you may remember, that's Early Learning Leadership Academy, and that's where my good friend Dana Carroll and my good friend Jennifer Crouch from OTC, and I lead a group of early childhood professionals that are tied to private and other public providers. We had ten partners this past year, running it like a little mini Leadership Springfield-ish is the way that I kind of describe it, that we get together once a month, we have topics for them, we visit sites, they came and visited us at Shady Dell last month, and then we have learning topics, too. The eventual outcome for that is that we are hoping that we will get to the point that we will have an Ella endorsement. So we have partnership classrooms all throughout the city. I've really tried to focus on not, not taking kids away from quality private providers, because that's not what we want to do, and so trying to raise the level of quality for all children that are six weeks old in childcare all the way through kindergarten entry. So we have established six new partners this year, and so we just started our first group of sixteen. So we're allowing the new six partners to learn from the ten old partners. We have it designed as a four-year program, so that endorsement would come towards the end of year three and to year four. Okay, and like Nicole, we had a revised strategy, so administration reports that the initial 1.2 strategy should be revised. We didn't have much of an emphasis before on the appropriate community partners piece in there, and so we felt like we needed to adjust that just a little bit, and succinctly add that we want to make sure that we're including those community partners in the kindergarten readiness piece, so, questions?
Well, I see the question I've asked before, but will we now be able to follow these kids through parents, teachers, early childhood through, so that you see the impact of preschool and parents, teachers, or early learning, whatever the new term is, for success rates for kids?
How about, I'm just going to say yes.
Okay. Can we, or will we?
We, they now have, we're now assigned... We, we, they now have, we're now assigning Moses ID numbers to all PAT kids. And, which has been a much bigger project than we anticipated. And so we started with the kids that were going to kindergarten last year because we wanted that to be a benefit to the site secretaries. And we got most of those kids in so the kindergarten, so that receiving school didn't have to enter them. When they came in for registration, they were already there with a Moses ID number. And so we started with that class that was just the one year away from kindergarten. And so now we're working our way backwards. And I'm guessing within the next month and a half or two, I've got a part-time clerical that that's all she's doing is...
I know that takes some time.
And it does, and birth certificates and enrollment information. And so it was a bigger beast than what we anticipated. But then we think we'll just be able to maintain as we get new families in after that.
The elementary schools love you.
Pardon?
The elementary schools must love you for that.
Well, I, we hope so. We wanted to make it a little bit easier for the elementary secretaries, so.
And remind me from the Explore report we had a month ago, Dana talking about moving the date for something so that there wasn't a gap in. So if you register your kid for kindergarten, you couldn't have registered your kid for Explore because you needed a certain number. So there was some coordination that was maybe going to take place moving forward?
I may have to sign a friend on that. I wasn't here last month, anybody? I'm thinking what you're referring to, and somebody else chime in if they need to. But I'm thinking what we're referring to is that we're trying to make sure that they are enrolled for kindergarten prior to enrolling for Explore. Therefore, we don't have a bunch of students showing up on the first day of kindergarten saying, hey, I'm here for kindergarten, and we weren't counting on them. We didn't have them into their accounts.
Right, because just in the community, I had several people who didn't know about Explore because they hadn't, because they needed that number. So it just seemed like things were a little, you know. So if you register them for kindergarten while they're there,
Right.
Explore is now coming up. So here's your opportunity to go ahead to streamline that, does that make sense?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that's what...
So that's just moving up the registration for kindergarten?
Right, yeah, because we'd already, always done a kindergarten registration the week before spring break, and that's when we got our counts. And so there's been a lot of talk around that. And it'll be a collaborated effort to make sure that we're getting things in, in the proper order. The, the risk you run of saying, hey, here's when we're doing enrollment for kindergarten, is that sometimes people interpret that incorrectly and say, oh, I missed enrollment for kindergarten, or I missed enrollment for Explore. So just continuing to communicate, it's open enrollment, but we started at this date. And the more kids we get enrolled, the earlier, the better we can plan for next year. Any other questions for me?
Thank you.
I think Marty Moore is up next.
Marty Moore.
Thank you. I can't guarantee that I'll get it right, but I'll sure give it a try. It's my pleasure to share with you this evening the work that's being done for our diverse and underrepresented students. And I want to just take you back a little bit to think about the report last year because a lot of this work is grounded in the teams that are represented here tonight. But it's also done in concert with community partners. Specifically, our NAACP collaboration and our ALAS, which is a Latin American leadership organization, along with community associations, specifically the Bartlett de Cator Neighborhood Association. So we partner with them, we brought in focus groups, and that gives rise to the process measures that we're going to report on tonight. Focus groups from the community told us probably the two greatest things that we could do to help diverse and underrepresented students would be to shore up academic support structures and then to build stronger professional learning structures to equip them for that work. So I just want to make sure that you understand that that feedback gave rise to those process measures. And then these process measures are going to hopefully begin to move the needle on the strategic scorecard that you're, that you're looking at. So I wanted to make sure that we have some kind of sense of how those things connect. One of the first of the academic supports that we want to share with you this evening is something that you've heard quite a great deal about with Explore and participation and the meals that are served. But what we haven't, I don't think, brought before you is the disaggregated data of how our super subgroups have fared and what their participation rate is. And I think it's significant that while our white students attended a higher rate, we're really targeting and pulling in the free and reduced lunch population that exceeds what we're paying, we're getting for our full pay students. And that's a real success point that we want to pull out of that. We have some concern that our Black and Hispanic students aren't attending at as high a level as we'd like yet. And so one of the things that you'll see in our next steps is really digging down, hitting those focus groups again, and finding out how we can engage them more fully in that Explore opportunity.
That's a percentage of the number of students participating in Explore.
Yes, percentage by that category group. Keeping in mind again that you could be Black and a free lunch student as well. But there's still work for us to do with our Black and Hispanic students. Similarly, when we look at our Club Encore participation, again, we are hitting good, strong participation from our free and reduced lunch students. These are, again, I would tell you the big difference here between Club Encore and Explore is that these are targeted students who are behind in grade level and are seeking some additional support to be on that same grade level as their peers. So that skews the demographics just a little bit. And again, lower participation from our Black and Hispanic students and another place that we want to dig in and see what we can do in terms of strategy to change that. So these are two academic supports that we've pulled out of the report. When you go to the longer report, you'll see lots of additional support structures that are, are in place, some new and some that we've had for quite a while.
Marty, now that's, for example, that's not nine percent of Hispanic students participated in Club Encore, it's that nine percent of the students participated in Club Encore are Hispanic.
Correct, correct. One of the things we're really proud of are the growth of our middle school empowerment groups. We find that students need a safe place, a place where they belong. They need to see inspiring role models. And one of the, one of the focus points that we heard from the community was that we need to have specific targeted groups for African-American Hispanic students. We started out slow, we started out purposeful. In the beginning, that was largely led by Glenn Marshall and L.A. Anderson, our equity coordinator and our equity specialist. With the addition of our Equity Champions, and we thank you for that addition in the funding last year, with an Equity Champion in every school, we have a gradual release model where they lead that club with the champion. And then the champion or another equity point person in the school takes over that club. And some are led by community partners, so we're able to grow those a little bit better. Probably one of the things that pleases us the most is to see the satisfaction surveys because each time they meet, the students do a participation survey about the content, specific pieces. The piece we've teased out is, is this providing relevant and meaningful support for you? Is it meeting those needs? And we're happy to see that across both African-American and Hispanic and both male and female groups, eighty-seven percent of the participants are saying yes. This is meeting a need for us. And so we're excited to see what the expansion of that's going to look like for us this coming year. The other process measure that we're here to report on tonight, it deals with our professional learning strategy groups. And again, these came to us from focus groups in the community. They told us that we needed to have a more culturally proficient and conscious understanding of what it looks like to have an other position in society. And so the, the layer training that we provide first starts with senior leadership team. Also, I know the board has been involved in some of those trainings. Over twenty-six hours last year were delivered to our senior leadership team. Thirty hours for those Equity and Access Champions. That's a blended approach. We have four monthly sessions and four face-to-face and four online sessions. And then they're engaged in projects in their buildings, so that even exceeds the thirty hours. We also have a menu of training based on what community members told us were gap areas and what the research tells us is best practice in terms of a way that you share that training. So one of the priority pieces of the customized trainings is that it's not about shaming. It's about taking people where they are and moving them forward and recognizing that we all have biases based on our perspectives, how we were raised and our experiences lead to our behaviors, lead to our actions. And so everything's grounded in that approach and customized for different sites. We feel like those customized trainings have had a huge impact in the number of negative reports that have come to our office from things that are happening at school. So we're starting to see some impact of that work as well.
All right, you have a little question. So on their Equity and Access Champions, those are one individual in each building?
One individual in each building and the early childhood center this year, so.
Okay, and does that volunteer, did folks volunteer? And are they selected by their principal? How?
We weren't really sure what that would look like last year.
Right.
So we put out the criteria, we put out what those job requirements were for principals and asked them to determine who that champion was in each building. What was very interesting is that on the very first session when they all came together, we knew we had the exact right people in the room. They are passionate about the work that they do, they are fearless, they are dedicated. And you know, from being in the classroom, that the stipend that we give them for that work does not come near for the hours that they put in and that support that they provide. They're another voice when an issue happens at the school because what we know is that we're, bias incidents are going to happen all the time. So what we know is, how do we handle that when it does happen? And having another filter to run a scenario by, having somebody who can, at a professional learning event or a leadership meeting at your school, share a little snippet, short little bites of little things that keep taking people a little further down the road is a really valuable resource. So the short answer to that very long explanation that I gave you is that they willingly stepped forward, they were endorsed by their principal, and they have served in an amazing capacity, and we're excited to see them this year. We worried about some transition, would we lose some little good people? A few people moved, there were some staffing transitions. You approved an additional one at the K eight building, so we have an elementary person and a middle school person. And in a fortuitous event, one of the persons that was moving would became the additional person at a K eight building. So she transitioned in her job role, but was able to continue serving. So we have three out of the fifty-four are brand new. We've already created a plan to bring them up to speed, and we haven't seen anybody take a, miss a beat in continuing that work and moving it forward. Ninety-one percent of them indicated last year that the training was relevant and positively impacted their job well. They felt that they were able to apply it in the field and do the work that their job description set forward for them. We're really excited to think about what we're going to be doing this next year. As I mentioned earlier, we're going to conduct focus groups to determine root cause for those lower participation rates and see what we might be able to do to engage more of our Hispanic and Black families, our students. We also want to continue partnering with community groups to expand the reach and impact of our programming. And we've had some huge interest from our ALAS and our NAACP group to do quarterly mentoring programs. So we would extend what we're doing already during the school day into quarterly community events where there would be, the way I think of it is going from man-to-man to zone mentoring. Larger groups of kids with smaller numbers of adults, but still those very positive role models and activities that I'm very excited to see what that's going to look like. Another thing that I think is going to really be a game changer is that the data has driven us to see that each school action plan process already documents the gaps that happen at each site. And so that provides an opportunity for them to say, here's the need at our school and what that looks like, and then to create an action plan to close those achievement gaps at their individual school. Those will be customized as they should be because of the needs across our community. And what that looks like at each school is very different. So that's exciting too. Also, our team reports that we would like to revise this strategy. If you think back two and even three years ago, we had good things happening in pockets, but not a real strategic organized focus in this area. And I commend you as a board for elevating this to a strategic goal because I think what gets measured gets done. And I feel very good about the work that we've been able to do as a district in this area by collaborating as a team here at SPS, by collaborating with partners, and having that visibility that says, this matters, this is really important. And so a lot of it was just getting things up and running, getting out, finding out from the community, listening to kids and hearing what were those gap areas, what did we need to do? And really creating some programming that matched what the needs were. We're at a place now where we like to say, we want to ensure that the outcomes are improving based on these supports. And so we've just made a subtle tweak in that language to up the ante for us in terms of outcome measures. What questions can I answer?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Well, it's with great pleasure then that I bring Dr. Dublin back up here along with Dr. Jay Anderson.
We'll take this guy instead.
It's a sorry second, but that's all right. Good evening, glad to be with you this evening as I, as I bring you an update concerning learner portfolio. This is something that Shane and I co-champion together. And Shane's going to be doing a lot of the talking concerning metrics, so giving his voice a warm-up break before we do the next thing. A couple of things there that we'll just highlight concerning our learner portfolio. First reminder that this work started a couple of years ago under the name of Profile of a Learner. And we transitioned in spring to Learner Portfolio, and that was for a couple of reasons. One of them, of course, we have some ID schools that do the whole learner profile, and we didn't want to mix up that work and give honor to that, but it just seemed like the right thing to do. I want to start with that second bullet first, the learner portfolio products. We are committed to providing students with the best and user-friendly templates for them. And so we're excited about the work that's going forward with that. We've brought you some examples of that over the past couple of years, and we'll continue to do that. Concerning the first statement around blended learning mentors, there are feedback. You have seen some student feedback in that sense. We will continue to bring that to you in the spring. But some statements from our blended learning mentors include these statements. I'm excited about the learner profile. I think this will be a solution to our desires as teachers to give students a real voice in the real world. Another quote, "Simple solution to better, to better the place for digital and non-digital work to showcase to an audience." Another statement, "Finally, a place for students to place learning that is relevant to them and will make an impact beyond their grade classroom." Two more quotes for you. "I used, I used it to lead student conferences, and parents loved, knowing that their child's artifacts were there to keep forever." And a final one, "The implications on how this can be used for a student to apply for jobs, scholarships, college applications are large. It is something that I have never imagined could be capable for my class, and yet my students are making it impactful and powerful for their futures. I love being a part of it." So some pretty amazing work there. When we look at the process measures before you, so if you look at the numbers, we see a nice increase over the first year where we had just over six hundred students involved with that. And we grew that by seven hundred and fifteen. And as you know, we really wanted to make this a grassroots effort. But, and we're pleased that we had seven hundred more students and eighty active classrooms that was regularly supporting that. We had just as many that are dipping their toes in the water, but it's not a regular thing. But at that rate, it would take us approximately twenty-five years for it to be fully implemented.
We don't have that kind of time, my man.
A little more intentional than that slow drip.
Good.
So as you are aware, we brought forward a plan previously. How do we get moving on that more intentionally? And as we have the students hit certain grade levels, we're going to put them in and roll them up and so that all students and teachers, as the students, get trained on it specifically, starting in third grade and moving up through twelfth, they'll have the right year, kind of a three-year rollout in order to get them impacted. And that will impact nearly six thousand students every year. So if I go to the top though with that, the freshman academy, as you know, at Hillcrest and at Glendale, this year at Glendale, they have three hundred and eighty freshmen, give or take, and at Hillcrest, about two hundred and seventy-five. So we're looking over at six hundred and fifty students that will have portfolios as part of their freshman experience, their freshman academy experience added this year to these numbers.
Just clarification. So we've seen this before.
You've seen that.
Okay, I'm just making sure, okay. And then this rollout is at those two schools?
For the freshman academies, yes.
Right, okay.
Correct, it doesn't include all of high schools.
Thank you.
And so, and then just for your understanding, this, this strategy is much better suited to fit under Goal Three. And so it will become associated with work in Goal Three. And I think next month, you'll receive an update from Ben, from Dr. Hackenworth about that. But going forward, that's where this, this work will fall under.
Jay, do you, and when I ask about the technical stuff, I have no idea what I'm asking. Beyond to say, do we have the capacity, the technical capacity to host twenty-five thousand new portfolios? Beyond to say, do we have the capacity, the technical capacity to host twenty-five thousand new portfolios to say nothing of sort of related to Jill's question about digital learning mentors, et cetera? That's a whole lot of new stuff. And then it's got to be somewhere.
Right, right.
Rooted in some place, right? Do we have this working capacity?
Yeah, it's all in the cloud. So, and the, good. As far as the platform capacity, the answer is yes because it's Google Slides is our platform. And that's where our students operate and that's where they're able to access. And the reason we chose that platform is they can take it with them after they graduate from us. So that is really not a strain on our system. Whereas the strain is making sure that those teachers that we train, they have to support the students in doing that. We believe the biggest work will come, especially that first year for our students. But as they roll up, so the third grade students gets trained in it, then they go to fourth grade. Well, all the third grade teachers will know it, or the third grade students will know it and the third grade teachers. But that next year is going to be the fourth grade student or teacher that has to learn how to keep that rolling.
Often from the fourth grade students who are in the third.
That is correct. Most likely the student will become the master in that one and will rely upon their services. Any other questions?
I think I just, yeah, that second bullet point is actually system-wide. It's not just Glendale. Correct. Yeah, I'm just now recognizing that. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. No other questions?
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
No, Shane, you don't get to come twice. What are you thinking about? Good night, everyone.
Yeah. Okay, so this next section, so we're kind of transitioning from the strategies into our party metrics. And we're going to be looking at our academic success and graduate outcome scorecard that Brett kind of gave a nod to at the beginning. Before we do that, I kind of want to give a nod to some of the team that are here. So while Jay and I get the glory of coming to share these metrics with you, that was a joke.
I got it.
Thank you. I mean, I saw that.
I got it.
It's quite a team that shoulders this burden and we've been working on this really intentionally, spending a lot of time together recently. So I want to thank the high school principals for being here front and center tonight, really engaging in this work. And my partner in crime is Dr. Nguyen and Jay's partner in crime is Dr. Methvin. We appreciate them being here. So again, while we kind of amount the piece tonight mostly, just wanted to say I appreciate them being here and that's just the intent of the purpose of this work. So this next section, we're going to focus on our metrics and some of the opportunities for improvement that have been identified by said metrics. Starting with, and kind of while I jump in here, Jay's going to pass around the building scorecard. So I just want to clarify what you're seeing here. The first scorecard that Brett passed out was district system-wide. This color scorecard is a building. It's a sample building card. So this is scrambled data. This is not real data. That will be pushed out to our building principals on Friday. But I just wanted to share and kind of train your eyes on some things, what colors mean, what this is. So if you look on the left-hand side, again, this is similar to what Brett showed you. There are the feeder pattern graduation outcomes right above the demographics. So it's kind of a gray grid. That feeder pattern graduation outcome will be specific to the feeder pattern of each building. So if I'm in Pershing, Pershing will get a scorecard that looks just like this and will have Glendale's graduation outcomes of that feeder pattern, as would here. So that's what that means. On the right-hand side, looks very similar to what Brett showed you, the one that you were looking at. Actually, if you want to go to the back page, I'll start with the high school one. What you see on the back page, I'll kind of boost my paper over your shoulder. This is a high school site card. So on the right-hand side, the colored, you will see EOCs starting with Algebra I. Under that, EOC English II, then Government and Biology. And the colors for the high school card are anywhere from red at five to green at one. And it shows the status within our five high schools in our district. So this is currently just status for comparison within our own district. To that point, we will be having peer schools, peer districts identified. And if you look on the very bottom left-hand corner, very bottom left-hand corner, there will be a state status that will have those dots either filled very densely or not so densely to compare to peer districts. So if I'm Glendale, to continue to use that example, I will have peer districts within the state that I'll compare my numbers to. Peer meaning demographics-ish, not exact, but similar to my, yes, enrollment, some of those factors so that I can compare to peers how I'm doing on those metrics on the right-hand side. Let me go, yes, go ahead.
So we'll compare school to school, not district to district?
School to school. Yep, I will have, yep, if I'm a building principal, I will have schools like me to compare to. That's correct. You want to go to the next scorecard, it's the middle school. It's in the middle of your packet of three. Similar to the high school, you have colors. The difference in the colors though, that I kind of want to train your eye, is that this is broken up into thirds in our district. So red is the bottom third, if you will, status. Yellow is the middle third, green is the top third. So I can look at all of my metrics as a middle school building principal compared to our district Springfield. Where am I at in middle, excuse me, bottom, middle or top third? Similarly, we will also have peer districts identified for middle school. And they'll have that similar densely or not so densely populated squares to show my comparison to peer districts, or excuse me, peer buildings in the state. And again, middle school, similar, but some things that are different from the high school. You have I-ready at the top on the right-hand side. So I-ready reading, I-ready math. You also have your MAP scores. And like Brett mentioned, it's from sixteen, seventeen because we don't have this past spring scores. We have Algebra I for middle school and then course failures at the bottom, similar to the high school. Jay's, yes, question about those?
This is really, really valuable. I am inherently competitive, right? So I mean, I would turn yoga into a competitive sport in my career. But the notion of scorecard, is that what we want or is this a dashboard? I mean, in some ways it's a little bit different because in some, I think to me, assessment is about getting better as opposed to, or not, well, is mostly about getting better. Maybe there's some ranking involved with the two. And I'm not sure that the competitive dimension here, beyond maybe sort of aligning with who we are naturally, I'm not sure that that moves us forward. I'm probably exaggerating, but you see the point here.
I do. You know what comes to mind when you say that, rather than competitive with the numbers and the colors? It's more for comparison. I would want, as a former middle school principal, I would want to know how, what my status is with other buildings like me. Because I may think that I'm doing great or not doing great, but when I compare myself to other peer buildings, it helps me show, you know, I'm not doing so great. Or this with other schools like me, I'm really not going to have a part. So I think for comparison purposes, probably our goal here more than tier point competition. So.
Yeah, because I can imagine, like in sort of pre-congratulations, you know, there was some discussion of do we want the red and yellow and green and all of that, right? Because it's sort of pretty stark and all of that. I'm not uncomfortable with that. But I do think it's worth mentioning that assessment is really about getting better as opposed to looking really good. Or, and more importantly, about getting better as opposed to looking.
Yeah, good.
I'm curious, are any of our high school principals presenting or commenting tonight? They are.
Yes. Yeah, we're going to be here till ten thirty.
Okay, I guess so. Because I mean, I just want to hear from, I just want to hear from them because I know that they receive these, this data and various reports over the course of the year. But what does a dashboard, scorecard, something that's all pulled together, what is the bottom line benefit for them? When they look at this, what is it now they can see? And do you have the ability to look year for year? Is it always just one year at a glance? Is it a living document? Is it a spreadsheet? I don't know how this is organized. But I just would like to hear from them, if since they're here, and maybe they don't know the answer to that yet because it's just now being rolled out.
Well, I think they're free to respond. A couple of things for context, a little bit of context.
I do.
This, they have not seen this one yet, the academic success.
Okay.
They will on Friday.
Okay.
They've seen the climate and culture one, so they can speak to what they've done with the climate and culture, maybe how that sparked conversations. So if anybody wants to.
And if they're not prepared, it's okay.
Yeah.
I want to say that I think one of the biggest things that my staff get out of any type of data like that dashboard or assessment is the awareness. You know, they teach and though we're trying not to teach in isolation on that, it's still that isolated type feel. And when they're able to see those numbers, it really opens up, you know, the perception of where we're at and how they have a part in that, you know? It gives them ownership of where we're at. And a lot of times, I know we all use it as motivation when we're looking at other schools or other schools that are comparables. So those are a couple of things that are really powerful.
It's much easier for us to see our gaps and our trends when it's on paper in a nice package for us. And I know personally for my culture and climate data, we've been able to take some action on some things that honestly were quite troubling related to our culture and climate data at Glendale High School. And had I not seen it laid out in that format, I mean, because it's been there all along, but I hadn't taken any action on it until I'd seen it in this format in the scorecard. So I would say that there's definitely advantages to see having our data laid out in front of us. Having seen the cheat sheet, so we'll see.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
The other great thing is having it through.
Yes.
So that you're not compiling it yourself?
Well, it's really using it too just to drive what we do because I think even just for us with our evaluations, whether we're teachers or whether we're building leaders, we're looking at how we can grow. And so that gives us also just validation for maybe where we're headed. And also just to make sure that we're headed in the right direction so that maybe we're not, we were thinking maybe this, but then when we have it, they're providing for us, maybe it validates something that we thought or maybe it changes the direction of where we need to head. So I think it's been very valuable.
Thank you.
I would think, the part I like is that we, we, I don't know who we is, that the schools will, people in the community, some of us will compare school to school within Springfield. But we have five unique schools that are really, it's hard to, I mean, we give them all Chromebooks, but then we kind of separate on what really the students are about and, you know. So I think comparing to like schools somewhere else is really, would be valuable to me as a teacher administrator in a building and just always comparing to each other because we're as different as we are alike, I think, as I go to the buildings. And I think that's a piece that I would, as a part of one of those buildings, I would like that rather than always being compared to each other.
Agreed. And it becomes more acute as you get higher, because we only have five, so there's really five separate demographics. And in middle, you have maybe two or three that are similar, three groups, two or three. Then elementary, you might have some groupings, but you're right, that's the value of the analysis.
I think that's really would be helpful to me to see, you know, this is, here's somebody else like me and how am I doing?
Sure. So Jay, I think is going to mention his elementary scorecard and we're going to kind of.
So can we still ask another question about our middle schools, which is awesome to see them here. It's fun to have them here. So can, anyone can jump in, but can you just give us a little bit of a, a little bit of a description of how you presented this, your culture and climate, to your teachers? Or how you plan to present this to your teachers because of, you know, I'm guessing there'll be some that be beating down your door wanting to see this and look at it, some that maybe so, and then not so much. But what, how did you do that and how do you plan to do that? It doesn't have to be a huge, big description, but whoever wants to jump in. I mean, I just think it's interesting.
Lucky you.
We could give you a zero.
You might be loving my teaching days of these questions.
You do, when?
In our Friday PLCs.
Okay.
So that's usually, I try to hit all the core subjects and I have one of my assistants hit the others. We haven't discussed with every PLC because we have one PLC that's on duty one week, so we're in that stage right now. But I think it's better to do it in small groups rather than in large, like I discuss each core area.
How do you feel like they received this?
This is the one I'm interested in.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and I've not seen this yet. It goes back to the competitiveness. I know my scores aren't going to be kicking for school. I know my population is totally different from kicking for school. Our reading level, math level, attendance levels. So if they found a like schools to look at, I'd be really interested.
Yeah.
That'd be great. Good. Anyone else?
I kind of have a little bit of a trickle-down.
Sorry.
I kind of have a little bit of a trickle-down communication plan. So I have a steering committee and I think a lot of us have some type of leadership committee that we meet with and I meet with my monthly. And so data kind of trickles down from them. I get a lot of great input from them on how to present it to staff. Sometimes the data is a celebration and sometimes it's not. Sometimes it's more of an opportunity for improvement. So that's where it starts and then it goes down to departments and then it goes down to PLCs and that part.
Great, thanks. Anyone else that wants to, they'll have their find it.
Lightning.
Yeah, it's great to hear that.
All right, so I'll jump in. We can turn to the very front page and you'll see the elementary scorecard. And something that I think is, you'll be in groupings of those elementaries as Shane talked about because there's more of them, there's going to be some that they can do internal comparisons and then obviously be working towards external comparisons. Some of the interesting things though that I think go with this is, and all pages, but since you're right there at elementary, one thing that I think is specifically notable is if you look at the trend. And so based upon the last time that that score assessment was taken, where's our trend? Are we trending in the right direction or are we trending the right direction? So while there might be a scorecard in comparison, it's also within, am I going the right way? Are we picking where our kids are really need to be? And so I think that's a more complete picture, a full picture and an important part of this. So I'm going to dig in a little bit as we go through it and just share some of the elementary achievement observations. And so again, realize that the scorecard that you have in front of you, it's based upon the district scorecard and the elementary levels of things. But the one you have in front of you is made up data. It's not accurate. The district scorecard that was handed out previously as far as the elementary data, that is correct. And in the paper, that information is correct, okay? So what you have in front of you and on the screen is actual information and that's important that you know.
So you want us to go back to the black and white one?
Yes. If you want to reference that, you're welcome to. I don't want to have the elementary breakdowns specifically, but it's going to give you that idea.
That's fake.
That's made up.
Sample, sample. That's the design.
Yes, the one that we just gave you. Okay. So I'm going to highlight some of this information on the screen. And so there are three specific things that we are going to be sharing, or at least from the elementary perspective, that I'm going to be sharing with you. And I pulled out the I-ready end-of-year assessments, two thousand and eighteen, the I-ready growth, and then the MAP from eighteen months ago. So we have some data. The I-ready is really from six months ago and the MAP is from eighteen months ago. So that will help you put that in correct context. So let's start with the I-Red, and this is specific to literacy reading. So on the I-ready end-of-year, just six months ago, you'll see that full pay students, white students and non-sped students were demonstrating on or above grade level. And we're talking I-ready, we're talking that category. Our goal is on grade level or above grade level. That's the goal. When we're talking MAP, we're talking proficient and advanced. So it's a little different scale as far as naming them, but that's what we're shooting for. So on that end-of-year assessment, you can see where you're at and then we can see where our lowest performers are. They're still, this is where they're ending. Forty-three percent of our free population, thirty-seven percent Black and Hispanic, and sped a seventeen percent scoring on or above grade level six months ago at the end of the year assessment. We wanted to take that a little bit further and continue with how much did they grow over the years? And that same trend continued. We see that our full pay, our white students and our non-special education students demonstrated the greatest growth from the beginning of the year, being on and proficient, excuse me, being on or above grade level to the end of the year on or grade level. And then our lowest movement towards on or above grade level was our free students, our Black students and less spent students. Then when we break it down on the map that was taken eighteen months ago, we had nearly eighty percent of our students receive or earn proficient or advanced, sixty-three percent white and our non-sped students. Again, you see that trend and it continues on the reading MAP with the, if they didn't do as well as we want them to. Questions about that data? Yes?
Is this, not about that, but is this, are you going to be able to look at it this, you know, this year at a glance, but also a column with last year that it puts it in context?
So that's that trend that shows, it will show that trend over the last assessment. So whether it's trending up or down.
Okay, but that's it? That'll be, but it won't give you how much it's trending or?
We will. This is just the first run.
Okay.
This is initial data.
Okay.
As you get more years of data, we'll be able to show two, three, four years. We'll start with one year trend and status, but you'll be able to add multi-years. So as you get these reports in upcoming years, it's probably going to have trend analysis that has two to three year trends.
Gotcha.
Right now it's this year as a starting point and putting kind of the picture together.
Put a stake in the ground here and then we track it.
I believe you that this is in here. I just have faith. I don't know where all it is, but I just believe.
All of those points are referenced right here, right here, you can find the data.
I guess I could. I knew where to look.
It's easier to watch.
I believe you.
If you're looking at the numbers, they're going to start to look quite great. Don't get lost in that right now.
I'm like, where is?
So that's the reading. So if I can, let me switch gears with you to the math. My observations from the data up to this point, that's our starting point. Again, three assessments that we're looking at, really two assessments of the I-ready and then the I-ready growth component and then the map assessment. So when we're talking math, we continue with that same trend that we did in, in reading when it comes to math assessment on I-ready, just the end of year assessment. Our full pay, our white students and our non-sped students demonstrated the highest achievement levels and our free, our black students and our sped students demonstrated the lowest achievement toward on or above grade level. Here's an interesting switch though, when we look at the I-ready growth, our full pay, our Hispanic and our ELL students demonstrated the largest growth in math during the year from beginning to the end. And then our free students, our black and our sped students showed the least growth during that year. When we look at the math assessment, again, that was taken 18 months ago, our full pay, white students, non-sped students were our highest performing, advanced and proficient. And our lowest advanced and proficient scores were our free, black and sped students. Any questions about that?
Not really a pleasure, but that growth assessment is, in some ways has importance to me.
Yes, absolutely. It gives us a more complete picture. Here's an example of this, of one specific scorecard. There's about, I think the last count was twenty-two thousand nine hundred and seventeen tables in the paper. But this is one of the elementary ones.
There you go.
And this is specifically what you talked about, Charles, a growth. This is a growth moment, okay? So this is grades two through five, beginning of the year to end of the year. So it's measuring students' growth towards being on or above grade level. And there are some highlighted colors there that just stood out to me and I thought you would like to see in reference. If they say black there, it's just, all of it's just information for what it is. But we see that full gray, full pay third grade students, nearly fifty percent of them grew towards on or above grade level. That's fantastic, okay? Is that good enough for me? Nope, not quite, but that's still a celebration. On the concern, fifth grade, look at fifth grade black students. Only twenty-three percent of them grew to where we wanted them to be. And in comparison to the other grade levels, especially the third grade black students, that was a high point in comparison to the rest of the other black students by grade level. A great concern to me is our sped students across the board, the limited growth that they have. And what can we do? And this data, this raw data will help us say, what can we do to help them get on or above grade level growth during the year? So that's an example of one of the in-depth reports that we, in-depth graphs and write-ups that you have in the paper. So here are our next steps. So we look at this data, we're getting in the hands, we're showing building leaders and building leaders turn around and they have collaborative opportunities with their teachers. At the elementary level, you'll see a picture on the screen of our elementary focus. We have four things that we're specifically working on. That's relationships, the workshop model, ignite and integrated units. And we believe that if a teacher masters those four areas, they're going to help the students move the needle on their achievement. Relationships and content, specifically the demonstration of mastery to content are both important. Relationships and content are important and so is the order. And we really believe that moving the right, with the right relationships, we're going to be able to move the needle on this one. So examining our learning culture in the lens of what is effective teaching and learning is critical. And with higher levels of relationships comes an improved accountability and student achievement. And I think we are fully aware at the elementary level that the weakness or strengths of our elementary level influences impacts that student's success in middle school, in high school, in their ability to graduate and their, and the rest of their life. So at the elementary level, really our focus is on insistancy to being at or on grade level or proficient and advanced because we're just not talking about test scores. We're talking about quality, future quality of life. And nothing moves that like relationships and being able to read on grade level. And so that's our focus and it's not just the high school's job to worry about graduates. That starts in kindergarten, that starts before kindergarten. And I think with this data helps us show that we recognize that. And so our next steps certainly are that, am I satisfied? Not even close, actually this spotlighted how much more work we can do. And to me, it's not necessarily working any harder, I don't think we can do that. But I think we can work smarter. And I think with this flashlight, rather than hammer on this, that we're going to have the right data to help create the right relationships to move the students forward. So that's it from the elementary side, any questions concerning that before we move on to middle school?
So I think we covered it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you Jay. So similar to his approach, you'll see middle school achievement observations and we're going to talk about I-ready and map. And he kind of went over how that looks. First bullet point is just on or above grade level and the second is growth and then the third is math. So again, you'll start to see a trend here from where Jay started was that on I-ready end of year assessments, full pay, white, non-sped students demonstrated the highest achievement toward being on or above grade level. Alternately, our free, black and ELL students demonstrated the lowest achievement. And you can see that, that there's some pretty big gaps as far as the top versus that.
I should have asked us Jay too, on the trend on these things, this is real data, is that from last year?
The.
The trend, you've got the arrows of them, that's from last year.
Sixteen, seventeen to seventeen eighteen.
Yes.
The exception of the map because we don't have seventeen eighteen yet, so that would be fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
Second bullet point again is the growth. So similar relief, full pay, white and non-sped demonstrated the greatest growth, while our free, black and sped students demonstrated the least growth. On our map assessments, as measured by being proficient and advanced, our full, white and non-sped kids achieved the highest levels whereas our free, black and sped demonstrated the lower level, lowest levels of being proficient and advanced. That was, excuse me, I should have said that, that was reading or ELA middle school. This next one is same tests, same assessments, but math. And then we've also identified overall course failures. So again, I don't want to read all these bullet points to you because it's going to pretty much be the same story, but the first one, I-ready is on or above grade level. Similar groups are performing high and low. Next one is growth. Then the third bullet is map assessments, again proficient and advanced on the math map assessment. Again, same groups in these areas are performing at the same levels. Last bullet point on this one is overall course failures for last year, this is seventeen eighteen. So in each of the three grades, our full pay, white, ELL, non-sped students had the lowest percent of course failures with sixth and seventh grade equal and they were both at fifteen percent and the eighth grade, the lowest, to over fourteen percent. Not a big span there, so I recognize that, but identified the difference. And then our free, black, non-ELL sped students had the highest percent of course failures, which is negative, obviously not one that can fail a course. This is a sample of what you'll see in the paper, one of the mini-charts as Jay mentioned. This is the I-ready end of year on grade levels, so not growth as he showed. And I've identified with the red and green numbers, kind of the highs and the lows, so highlights and no lights. If you train your eyes to the left-hand side, the columns six through eighth grade, so this is the whole middle school grade span on the I-ready reading assessment showing their being on or above grade level. Free, the red is thirty-four percent, whereas full is sixty-eight percent. If you do the first math, that's definitely right, so quite a disparity there between free and full pay. Down at the bottom, similar to what Jay mentioned, sped is at twelve percent on or above grade level and non-sped fifty-five percent, so again, quite a gap. You'll see a similar trend, sixth, seventh and eighth grade, we'll read all those to you, but we've kind of identified the highs and the lows. Of concern, and someone probably could surmise this on their own, but when you see the data, it does highlight it. You look at seventh grade, ELL, two percent of those kids are on or above grade level whereas non-ELL fifty-two percent. Again, that may not be a shocking stat, but I think it's a stat that is stark, that we need to, need to be thinking about. Course failures, again, you saw the lineup, but very similarly, our free kids, twenty-three percent failed a course in sixth grade, whereas six percent of our full. Again, I think a couple of points of concern here, non-ELL in both sixth and seventh grade, or eighth grade for that matter, have pretty high rates of course failures as compared to non-ELL peers. Okay, so middle school next steps, conclusion to next steps. So this is very similar, you'll see even in the wording as Jay, so we collaborate on this and on what we do. So we are working potentially on giving the data in our leader's hand that you heard from our high school principals, they are interned and sharing their data with their teachers, are really getting that ownership buy-in from teachers and talking that, okay, now that we know this about our building, what we do. But lastly, we're really talking at the middle school level specifically to ensure that our instruction is aligned to the standards. So are we teaching what we need to be teaching? And then that learning is assessed to then make data for decisions. And specifically there at the middle school level, we're talking about individual kid data. So how do we know that the kids are learning and how do we know that they're not? And then what we do when we know that? So those are the conversations that we continue to have to hopefully affect the numbers and shape the process. So I'm going to go ahead and slip into high school at this point. Some similar processes, you're going to see some similar trends, looking at different tests. So this is the end of course for high school. First bullet is Algebra I and English II, Government and Biology. So you may notice that for Algebra I and English II, the scores are from 2016, that is accurate. They took the test last year, but there was a vendor error and Desi's not using that in reporting purposes. So we are reporting the 2016 scores for Algebra I and English II right ahead, head, not moment. But for Government and Biology, we are, so it's 2017 scores. So again, I will read all this to you, but you'll see very similar trends. Then Algebra I, full pay, white, non-ELL, sped kids scored the highest proficient and advanced. Their peers, free, ELL, black and sped, had the lowest levels. That pretty much runs through the four assessments. Again, same thing here, just a sample of the charts that you're, that you're going to see. This one is the end of course for ELA II, Government and Biology. Some high points and kind of one thing I thought was interesting in ELA II, reduced and fuller both eighty-six percent. Same, I would probably have guessed that, free is sixty-two percent, full twenty-four percent, lower. White kids are seventy-nine percent and then black students are fifty-six percent. And then again, similar trend with our sped students across the board in all three ELC assessments. They have the lower scores as compared to their peers, quite a bit lower, quite a disparity. Okay, so here are our graduate outcomes and course failure observations. So the previous ones were assessments, this is our grad rate and course failure specifically. So just a couple of things that I pulled out of there. So our overall graduation rate is highest for our six-year cohort at ninety-point-nine percent with our four-year cohort rate the lowest at eighty-five. So what that means is our four-year rate cohort, our four-year cohort is this, just this last May, seventeen eighteen graduates, we graduated eighty-five percent of our kids. The six-year would be two years prior to that at ninety-point-nine percent. And obviously we capture kids on an ongoing basis, so we didn't necessarily graduate ninety-point-nine percent two years ago, we have captured some of those kids and graduated those kids up to now, ninety-point-nine percent. For each of the four cohorts and our graduation rate, again, similar trend, white, non-sped, non-ELL have the highest graduation rate in their subgroups when we compared them to their black, Hispanic, sped and ELL students. There was an exception in the six-year cohort, our six-year cohort was kind of our highest group. In that case, ELL has slightly higher graduation rate than non-ELL students. Our lowest graduation rate in all of the cohorts was in our, just this last May, our ELL students, their graduation rate was seventy-three point five percent. So three, less than three-quarters of them graduated. Lastly, course failures, similar metric that we looked at in middle school. Each of the four grades, full pay, white, non-ELL, non-sped had the lowest percent of course failures. Ninth grade had the highest overall at nineteen percent and twelfth grade the lowest at one percent. And then of course, free, black, ELL and sped, similar trend, had the highest percent of course failures. Here's the chart for our graduation rate. Again, to kind of train our eyes there, so the four-year on the left-hand side, seventeen eighteen, is mostly red. Partially because this, that, we will capture those kids as time goes along. So if you go four, five, six years, seven year, we have more green because we do capture, re-engage, graduate more kids. Those four-year cohort kids, we just did, it's a great process in doing that. So.
So it's like when you say capture them, you're talking about explore and.
Re-engagement.
Credit recovery, yeah. We have, we're doing a lot of things, when you say capture.
Yes.
We're not just.
We're not, yes, we're bringing it back.
We're bringing it back because of all the efforts that's going on, District One.
Absolutely. I want you to notice that on the seven-year cohort, it was pretty high, like reduced kids in the seven-year cohort were fourteen to fifteen, ninety percent of them graduated. That's one hundred students, so it's a smaller in size, but that, that's a pretty high metric. Full, ninety-six point three in the seven-year. So we don't have on here what they started at, but if you notice, that, that's a pretty high graduation rate. So that gives us hope as the years go on, and we do, to use the word, we've captured those kids, that it does increase for those four years. Course failures, we bring this to light because we feel, and you can hear from the high school principals, that a student failing a course is a very high determining factor in their persistence of graduation, their success rates, we want to look at this. Freshmen are where our really, the data is low. We have, we have a lot of kids failing courses. Free, the red is twenty-nine percent compared to their full peers at eight percent. Black students, thirty percent of freshmen failed a course last year. Sped at twenty-one percent. I think it would, again, someone might have known this without looking at this chart, but as you go along in the years, the numbers lower, which is good on this chart, less kids fail a course. Of course, they're older, they're mature, but they will be learn how to be a high schooler and they can, they do better. Our goal would be to start them as freshmen at a lower rate and then that would just only get better as they go through.
Isn't it possible we're not talking about the same people anyway because some of them are gone who performed that poorly?
Could be.
I fear they're already gone.
Sure, sure.
It's all right to be the damper.
No, that's true, yeah.
Isn't that what you all were thinking?
And obviously this is, this is apples, oranges, bananas and pears. These are not, you have the same kids, so this is one year.
I'm just looking, thinking of it conceptually. I'm done looking at your numbers, man.
I'll just move on, Jill, I got you.
Do what you gotta do. I'm going to do one concept at this point. I've been awake for a long time.
Yes, I got you. Okay, so let me get to my conclusion to next steps and I'd like to, a couple of our principals are going to get up here, but some things that we've pulled out of this, obviously this has highlighted some areas of concern, some areas that we need to work on. So specifically the first one, we've, the high school teams really have renewed a concerted effort to re-engage students who have dropped out. Now, they have done that historically, but I'll tell you, and they will tell you that there has been a huge effort like none other this school year. And I think them, when I say high school teams, I mean our principals and their site, CSIs, APs, teachers are involved, attendance advisors, counselors, we've really been working on re-engaging students. We're currently conducting a credit audit of this year's seniors, eighteen, nineteen kids. kids. We don't wanna wait until May to know how many we're gonna graduate. We should know how many kids are on track, how many kids aren't on track, and then developing some strategies to monitor credit deficiencies, to capture them, that's right. There's a dropout task force that has been developed, and actually met today for the fifth and final time, I think. We're developing processes and strategies to retain students and to increase our graduation rate, to kind of bring some consistency. One specific strategy is continuing on our focus on freshmen, as you saw, that data, I think, supports that via our freshman academy and our two high schools going down the progress. Then lastly, really using our SAP process, collection plans, so that our high school teams develop strategies to focus on those underperforming subgroups. So, now that we know it, they're gonna be working on developing strategies to focus on those underperforming subgroups. So, Alina, your bird question.
Question. Bullet point number two, so when you say, we are gonna conduct a credit audit of all seniors, so, are you saying our online, for like, I would use the word transcript process, doesn't, our programming doesn't automatically know where a student's at at any time? I mean, like, so we have to go conduct an audit, as opposed to just click, click?
I just thought we were trying to identify who those people were, so we could try to pull them along.
Yes. And I will say too, Alina, counselors currently do that, it's not like a new thing that they've not done before, but there's been a highlight and concerted effort this year on making sure we're doing that on our seniors right now, so that we know who may not be on track.
So, we don't wait till May to go, oh darn, that person's not gonna walk.
No one pleases surprises.
But I mean, isn't our internal, I don't know if I'm using the right words, but our internal, okay, shouldn't we be able to run a report at any time against an audit of graduation, right?
Yeah. I think this is as much about knowing, okay, I did it at Glendale, three hundred, three hundred and twenty-five seniors, I've got three, it's not gonna happen, I've got seventeen seniors who not are on track, who are not on track, and now we're gonna put other strategies to get them to graduation in May. It's more about the strategies.
And that's prior to the senior year, though, right?
Yeah.
So that they can correct that.
Well, we're doing it currently, our eighteen, nineteen seniors, kind of as a, our hair's on fire for that.
Last...
And my thought was, I didn't wanna get to a senior, and then it's, I mean, it's almost a junior thing.
It is.
To do it ahead of time, so...
Where's your passion, do it every year?
Yeah. That was what I was thinking, I said, this is not a one-time deal.
So, like, every year, when a student works on their schedule, their counselor individually goes over their, what they need for the next school year, if they fail the course, they have to reschedule to retake the course. So, it's actually done, but this is like Dr. Dublin said, very, like, intense, and it's not just, well, it is seniors, but the whole thing is actually the eighteen, nineteen cohorts. So, students who actually, at one time, we were reclassifying into another grade level, and everybody's helping us correct all of that, it's all of those students in the cohort that should be graduating this year, looking, we're doing an audit, which our counselors already were on that anyway, and we're already doing it, but it's just kind of in a heightened awareness to make sure that our site teams have a plan.
I think a good thing that Natalie references there is that we used to reclassify kids, right, so, like, way different ways, so we didn't know what actual cohort they were a part of, as per state graduation rate. So, if they were credit deficient, they would just stay as freshmen, stay as sophomores. But then, when they came up to the four-year graduation rate, right, we didn't know that they weren't gonna graduate with that class, because they might have been classified two grades down at one point. And then we get hit on them, and then we should have known, right? So, one of the metrics that's on here is credit deficient by grade level, so that we're monitoring that on a regular basis. And the classification process has been cleaned up, and it's gonna be the same across all five high schools, so that we can be more consistently monitoring those kids, as freshmen, sophomores, juniors, seniors, keeping them. Because the goal is four, right? We don't wanna graduate kids in seven years, we don't wanna give up on them if they don't get it four years, but the goal is four. That's the federal metric that we're held accountable to. The state gives us a little bit more time, and we use every ounce that we can get, but we want to get them across the board when we can.
So, at this point, I'd like to ask Natalie and Eric, they are gonna come up and kind of share from the site perspective.
All right. Good evening, once again.
So, let me, I'm gonna say real quick, so Eric is gonna kind of jump in with the why, why are we here, and what are some of the contributing factors? And then Natalie's gonna kind of follow up with the, how are we addressing it, some of the things we've already talked about, but how are we as a team addressing some of our factors?
All right, so, the why, to our decreased graduation rate and the increased dropout rate. So, and hopefully, we can bring some context to this, and hopefully, some more understanding and perception from the high school division. But the driving question, sorry, I'm looking at some slides here that you don't have, so if you have questions, please stop me. So, the driving question that we put out to our high school division was, what are the contributing factors that the high school administration division have identified as causes of a decreased graduation and an increased dropout rate? So, that was the driving question, and what we got back in response from the high school division team was that there were ten factors that they identified, and two of those factors were recognized as the most significant by far. In fact, they ranked them, and they were definitely a one and two. The other eight factors, I'm gonna read through, and if I need to repeat, please let me know. So, sorry, the two most significant were attendance and academic deficiencies. And how we defined academic deficiencies was below grade, below grade level on reading and math, or chronic failure of, chronic failure of classes. The other factors were homeless or home environment, family dynamics was one. Number four was lack of alternative placement options and resources. Number five, under-resourced learners, specifically SES, free-reduced lunch students. Number six, mobility. Number seven, disconnection with at-risk students, the at-risk student population due to just a shift of focus. Mental health, drugs and alcohol or high-risk behaviors. And number ten, internal SBS barriers. So, that was the ten, but again, the two that were most significant were attendance and academic deficiencies. I will also add, just through discussion and stuff, we talked about how attendance and academic deficiencies, we feel like were a lot of the other factors stemmed from. And so, a lot of the other things being circumstantial, from student to student, from school to school, very circumstantial on if mobility is a factor. For some, it is, for some, it's not. Also talked about the combination of factors, where you have a student that is highly mobile, not attending, has, you know, is possibly homeless, meaning multiple factors, and how that makes them that much more at risk. The last thing that I will share is about attendance. And so, one of the things that we believe as a division that we really have to look at is our feeder patterns, and look at the data in our feeder patterns. And so, when I looked at the attendance, the ninety out of ninety, for the last three years, each division has come down pretty significantly. And so, again, I know you don't have this data in front of you, but those drops range from five and a half percent to two and a half percent, again, the ninety out of ninety, so, in each of those feeder patterns, of the five feeder patterns. So, and we'll also add before, I let Natalie take over here on the how, that we're gonna address these, is that, and Dr. Dublin's already addressed this, our commitment is extremely high. We see this as an opportunity for improvement by far. These numbers we take personally, I can tell you that this is, this is, these are numbers that we're not happy with at all. And so, we're very anxious to move away from re-engagement and recovery, and get into prevention and retention, and being proactive. So, anyway, with that said, the how.
Yes, well, and I think that we've already covered actually just about everything I was gonna say, but I'll just, so I'll be really brief. As Dr. Dublin mentioned, high school principals, we have, like Eric just said, this has hit us very personally, and we really want to figure out what we can do to get better. And so, high school principals have been meeting with Shane and Sheila since July, and we've been meeting every week. And AAA's been very supportive and helped guide us with our, with our data, making sure that we could track kids down, and so, we're really appreciative of their help. But we, so, we met, we've been meeting as high school, as a group, as high school principals, supporting one another, getting ideas from one another, but we each formed our own teams at the high school level, which have consisted of our assistant principals, our CSIs, our counselors, our Moop teacher, and then just other people have kind of ebbed and flowed in those groups, our attendance advisors, even though they haven't been meeting with us at the site, they've been an integral part of helping us re-engage and track down students. So, we've been meeting with Dr. Dublin, Dr. Nguyen, once a week, we've been meeting with our own site teams at least once a week, as we have really tried to re-engage students. And some of the things that we have done is to get several students re-engaged, which I'm happy to report that we've been pretty successful in getting students from our, from our seven-year cohort, six, five, and four-year cohort, re-engaged. We have looked at Missouri options, kind of opening that up a little bit more for students, availability, credit recovery, credit acquisition, and worked really closely with the launch staff to make a personalized plan for students that might just, especially those that just need a few credits, what can we do for you, how can we get you back in? And we have reached out to literally every student that we have that have dropped out of our high schools in the, in all cohorts. So, that's something that we have done up until now, but right now, like Eric just said, our, our focus is going to shift. We're shifting to our eighteen, nineteen cohort, and we've already talked about the credit audit and things that we're doing there. But what we really want to do is continue to be more proactive. We wanna shift our focus from credit recovery to content recovery. We wanna get the kids right when they're failing, and see what can we do so that we can prevent them from failing a class. And so, that's a, that's a huge shift, when we've been doing credit recovery for, I don't know how many years, it's been around forever, and we wait till a kid fails a class, and then we say, oh, now we're gonna put you back in. And so, we're really trying to move away from that, but that's a huge culture shift in, in our schools, in our way of thinking, and how we do things. And so, that content recovery is very important, so we are all looking very closely at that failure rate, but we're looking at that failure rate every week. We're getting reports from downtown, these kids have Ps and Fs. We're making calls to their parents, we're using our automated systems to really make sure that everyone's aware that you're failing, we're assigning mentors to kids, especially those kids that we've identified as maybe not making it to graduation in May, we're assigning mentors and really trying to make sure that we have a plan in place. So, hopefully, we all get at least ninety-two percent graduation rate at our schools. So, we have some really intense efforts going, it's taking a huge team approach. Our CSIs have been a mainstay for us, and we really depend on their expertise, but this is bigger than our CSIs. This is taking an entire team, it takes all of us, and we obviously wanna expand that to Dr. Anderson talking about the elementary focus, and how elementary is just as much a part of this graduation rate as we are, we just get hit hard with it, because this is where rubber hits the road. And so, we really appreciate the fact that he recognizes that, and we're looking forward to re-engaging with our elementary and middle school colleagues to address this problem system-wide.
Questions?
Eric, how much, as you put together the top ten list, how much input or what kind of input did you get from actual students, as opposed to just staff putting together the, the issues? Did you survey students? Did you talk to any of the students at all about, to help identify some of those barriers?
Well, not with, not with this information, not with these top ten factors, no. I'd like to think that our, that all of our high school division thought kind of through the student lens as they thought about these factors, but no, we did not. We had a kind of a short timeframe to bring this information to you, and so, we did not.
And our, our lists of students that have dropped out are very revealing to us. Those are kids that we have worked with for a number of years, and we actually can probably, all of us can pinpoint kids who have dropped out because of this, actually, the list says sometimes, because we do poll the kids, why did you drop us? Sometimes it says specifically, but we know, and have worked with them for a number of years, and we know if they're homeless, if they have a drug issue, you know, what, what their circumstances are.
Well, we commend you for this, because this is an important effort. We'd love to stand up there longer and have to read more names and hug more people at graduation, it's like our favorite part.
Us too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, all of that has led to this. We are, we have developed two new strategies, Focus Area One, Goal Two, the first being one point, two point six, that really is focused on the core academic success and the academic achievement measures, and it reads this, the district will demonstrate annual growth in the core academic success based on this assessment of all students, with an intensive focus on closing performance gaps for under-resourced and underrepresented students. Obviously, as Jay and I went through our numbers, we saw the theme of under-resourced, of underrepresented students performing lower than their peers, and so that's, thus the strategy. Focus on graduation rate, one point, two point ten, we've also developed a new strategy therein, and it reads, the district researchers develop and deploy strategies to increase the graduation rate of all student populations, again, with an intensive focus on under-resourced and underrepresented students, as our data dictates, I believe. As a preview, so, we're done, this is just saying, as a preview, Focus Area One, Goal Three, coming Tuesday, November thirteenth, report. And lastly, any additional questions?
Can we make a comment? I know she's tired, I'm not, Charles is. Anyone else?
I'm tired. Well, I just wanna say to our principals that, that we understand that you probably could have done any one of five or six different dits to see at your schools, because there's so much going on, but we appreciate you being here, it's good for us to see you and hear from you, and I hope it was good for you to hear how engaged this board is, and, and how we all, we understand and think we understand what you face every day, and how hard you're working to get our kids across that stage. So, thanks for being here, good to see you.
Can I make comments?
Say what you gotta say.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm trying to do, but I don't sound shy, make your... I know, the time I've been on the board, you know, sometimes it feels like we just were looking at a lot of activities and doing stuff over the last thirteen years, but we are at a whole avalanche of data tonight. I mean, we're breaking out a fire hose tonight with data, which is fine, and I think that's great. But what I really think is, this is some of the best data I've seen since I've been on the board.
Looks pretty relevant.
Because, one, it, and I'm not saying it's good all where we want it to be, but it tells us we got a lot of work to do, but if we don't know where we're starting, we don't know where we're gonna end up. And so, we gotta start somewhere. And I think, as tired as we all are, I think this is some of the best data that we've had for us to focus on and go forward. But the, one of the things I wanted to make sure that we do as a board is, if we don't look at it and help us to allocate resources and focus on what we need to be doing based on the data that it tells us, we wasted a whole lot of time back here, sitting at that front row and chairs behind, and asking the tough questions, asking what, what impact are we seeing with these things? Because it's all good, and I just, I just wanna put it back on our shoulders for us to use this data to help us make decisions, to allocate the resources, to set the strategies to do that. Because this tells us something, tells us a boatload of stuff, that we got a lot of work to do, but now we know where we can pinpoint, whether we start talking about equity, resources, whatever the, whatever it is. And I really appreciate the fact that we are, we're looking at it not as much internally, that we're not comparing Central with Kickapoo, Kickapoo with Parkview and all that, we're looking at actual cohorts of, like, schools, because I think we learn more from outside to some degree, because we can get wrapped up internally of just, I mean, we get so focused, we miss stuff, because we've done it this way forever and that. And I, and I really think this data is gonna help this board make better decisions down the road, to impact our kids, to get more kids walking across that stage over the years. And it's not gonna happen in one year, this is not a quick fix, this is a culture change. And I really think that, I mean, I just, I'm, as exhausted as we may be, I really think this is exciting information, and some of the best data I've seen coming out of this district since I've been on the board. That's useful, you know, it's not data for the same, I mean, it tells us stories, it tells them stories, and where to go now. And so, I just applaud all those people here, and the people that are not here that are home in bed.
It's eight twenty-four, they're not asleep.
Getting a good night's, little watching ball game, probably.
The Cubs are losing.
Excellent.
Just whatever.
I'm okay with that, but I just wanna thank all the work you guys have done to get to this point, and, and I know it's not gonna stop. You got a lot of work ahead of you, I know that, but I just appreciate what you're doing. I think this is, stuff I heard this weekend...
I think this is, stuff I heard this weekend and, you know, Stephen and I were just talking about all the stuff dealing with equity and how do we do, that this isn't a, this gives us an opportunity to pinpoint resources, not necessarily do a shotgun approach. If we need it over here, put resources here, which means somebody may not get the same thing, which they don't need the same thing because they have different needs. And so I think that helps us focus on that and I think that's the whole point of having a plan, having the data, is we can focus instead of just, just paint it all. And we can focus it. So I, I just, I applaud everybody's effort to make this happen and get there. I'm really excited about moving forward with this information.
I mean, I love this stuff and I'm tired too and I will keep it brief.
It's a lot of information. I'm not falling asleep. But hey, giddy with all the statistics, what would you like to add to the equation?
Yeah, ju, I think that Gary puts his finger on something really important here and that is, this is data that's, that's truly meaningful and it's kind of courageous in an interesting kind of way because, I mean, we're putting a stake in the ground on the so-called achievement gap, right? I don't like that phrase, but the phenomenon is real and the data bears out, the phenomenon is real. And so now it's kind of sort of on us, right, to make some decisions about where we allocate resources. And assessment is about making us better. It's not always to look good. In fact, we look great in some areas, we look not so great in other areas, but we will get better. But we won't get better unless we take the data seriously and we act on them as a board.
Well, and more than that, I'd say, um, I, I don't think these people were the least bit surprised by what we learned in this and I recognize that about you. What we have to, I think, think about differently and be courageous about is perhaps some of the models we have been using to try to change that hardworking. And so that's where the hard work is. It's not learning this that was hard, you all knew that. It's, is there something that we could do better or differently? Because that can be overcome. We don't just throw up our hands and say, well, that's how it is. And we won't and I don't think anyone in this room is, but I think that's the harder part. Anyone else? Do you all want to say anything since you stayed so long? You know you do, you want to say something. Not you, Eric. Anyone?
No, but we need to hear from our newest principal.
No, but the two on the end can say something if they want.
They're really playing the high school representatives tonight, uh, as hard as they can.
You all said very relevant things. Nothing, anything else? Anybody?
I'll say that we have dug a little bit deeper. There's also a dropout task force, um, represented by all of the high schools and so we...
Could you be more specific because I almost asked, who's on that?
Absolutely. Oh, my goodness. Um, so go to my...
I don't need names, concepts, concepts of who's on that. Don't need names, concepts.
Well, so we just wanted to have a little bit deeper of a dig on looking at really what we can do. We, we can talk all day long, but we need to know really how we move forward. So, um, with the leadership of Dr. Dublin and Dr. Nguyen, um, Eric and I served, we had Jackie Hill from Hillcrest served, as well as Jane McCann, which is one of their counselors. From Glendale, we had Tammy Quinn from Kickapoo. Um, Tammy Quinn is an assistant principal. From Kickapoo, we had Leslie Helfrich, who is their CSI. From my building additionally...
What, what's your acronym? CSI?
Coordinator of Site Interventions.
Thank you.
So they are our, um, our kind of administrative team, extra person, our liaison to really help with, um, all of those support systems for students. Um, additionally, from my building, John Whitmer, he's been a CSI as well as currently serving as an assistant principal. Rhonda Mannen served, um, Courtney Martin. So we, I mean, really representative of the whole district too. And from Launch, Becca Bartels helped us. And so we have spent, so Natalie mentioned that we, um, have been meeting as high school principals every week since July. This task force met every other week, um, for the past five weeks and we divided into subcommittees and we actually, um, are fine-tuning a proposal to bring forward about how we feel like we can really do a better job of trying to make sure that we engage students, keep them engaged and see them through to the end for them to be able to graduate. So, um, I appreciate being able to serve on that committee, being able to dig deeper in that and I'm excited for us to be able to come forward and share that information that we've, um, been able to, uh, on that committee, so.
Great, we look forward to it.
Yeah, thank you.
We might not have thirty-two things on the agenda the night you come to speak about
that. We might go with sixteen. Just moments.
There you go.
Let's start to add it.
It seemed to me, uh, when Gary and Natalie came and first talked about academies and I think, Gary, I'm saying this right, you said, you know, half my time will be spent with kids and reading, I'm still doing read. Well, to me, that told me, this is, honestly, folks, I've been at this a long time and as a counselor at Central, I could identify as freshmen who most of the dropouts were going to be. So this really isn't a new problem, it's just more crucial because there is no place for dropouts now to go and there used to be jobs, say, to go to. But to me, the issue is if we're still doing, having to do reading at the high school level, I think the problems identify there. Because if you're still not at grade level, we're, the, the problem and, I don't want to put it on Jay in the elementary because they've got, but he said they've got to form a relationship. If kids are at grade level there, then they're at grade level at middle school, then they're at grade, you know, high school seems to have the dropout problem, but the dropout problem did not, I bet you there's not one percent that really happened at the ninth grade level. I bet you it happened before then. So as we're looking, we can't forget about these kids, but when we're looking at resources, I think the biggest bang for our buck so that the high school people can then do the things they need to do is spend that money so when they're, they're at least close to grade level when they get there. I, I just, I don't think that's a new problem. I mean, I honestly think it's the problem that have been there since I was a counselor in nineteen seventy. They're not at grade level. They're not succeeding. They don't, and so how do you make up for that? How do you, you know, to me, it's, it's where we identify it and what can we do so when they get to middle school, which is so crucial, but then when they get to high school academically, then we've got all these other new things that they can kind of, if they're there academically, then they can look at the careers and have this wide o, open thing. And to me, that's, that's the, I mean, I'm glad for all this because this really does identify what we can do and we can't forget it, we can't say, oh, we're going to start with kindergarten, forget the other eleven grades. But we can really start there and say, that's what we've got to do so high schools can be successful. Now they're trying to make up for the deficits and then trying to fit them into these other good pro, GoCaps programs, other programs, the academy programs, you want to do this? Well, I'm three years behind in my reading, I can't read that material, I can't do it. Um, I don't know. It just seems like to me, our elementary and early childhood are crucial for us to make those changes and give the resources there so when they get to high school, they're close to be in ninth grade level academically and then they'll be there with attendance because they've been successful. You just don't attend when you're not successful. You don't, I know. You know, so I don't think it's a new problem. I just think it's more crucial than it's ever been, so that's why to me it's more scary than it's ever been.
Denise?
Well, I think as we're talking about everything that we're trying to do to meet the needs of our students today and we've talked about night and explore and expansion of pre-K and, we didn't talk about encore tonight, but we know how important that is and we talked about our expanded athletics and everything else. I, I just don't want to let the moment pass without mentioning that a lot of that's come with our leadership at the very top and that's what Dr. Jungman has brought to our district in the beginning, so we don't often thank you, so I just wanted to do that.
It's a good team. We've got lots to do, or far from where we're allowed to be, so we'll keep fighting our fight, raise the bar.
Anybody else? See if I can remember where we were.
That's a new agenda.
No, we're on this.
Yep. Suit report, I've got twenty-two minutes, just kidding. I've got two items. Education Week is tomorrow, Hostile Fire Chamber, uh, Zora Mulligan, Commissioner of Higher Education will be presenting and I think to your point, Bruce, it's a little bit of a conversation and workforce and there aren't a lot of places for kids that don't leave with credentials anymore. And, uh, in society and our system, so how do we get better aligned K-12 through 16 and 20, right? So, uh, I think we'll hear a little bit about that and the Talent for Tomorrow Task Force that's been going on. I know we'll have some board representation and some others there. MSBA was a great conference this weekend, uh, SPS was part of leading three sessions, long-range planning, virtual learning, our launch program expansion and telling our story and the communication and celebrations that are happening there. We also had students represent us, uh, both from Explore and our middle school activities expansion and they did a great job at the student showcase. And that is it for the suit update update. I've already covered legislation, nothing new to add.
Thank you. Well, we'll move on to Board of Education discussion and eleven point oh-one is an update on the community task force and I think that Tim and Denise did a great job of, you, you focused in on one issue. If you have anything to add, please do so.
Yep.
That, that is a awesome group of people and I'm just really pleased and excited about what, how thoughtful they're being, which I can tell from what you shared. The October regular meeting is scheduled for October sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, so we'll be back. The Hall of Fame reception, October seventeenth at five thirty PM at the White River Conference Center. The Hall of Fame luncheon, October eighteenth at noon at the White River Conference Center. Anybody having any plus deltas, uh, please feel free to provide those. And we will be going into executive session this evening, so we'll need a vote on that. We'll go into executive session to discuss real estate and personnel matters as provided in sections six, ten, point zero two one subsections two, three and thirteen of the revised statutes of Missouri. Is there a motion that the board made in executive session to discuss real estate and personnel matters as provided in six, ten, oh two one, two, three and thirteen? Thank you, Alina, and do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Charles, and we'll vote. Good night, everyone, and thank you for your obvious endurance.